Evening, we'll get started with the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, June twenty six. Um, this meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording? Alright, so during that, we will go on to um our call to order and we'll call attendance Malcolm Beck.
Here.
Jackie Kane.
Here.
Jonathan Hank- Hankins.
Still here.
Pedro Pachano.
Yeah.
Randy Nelson here. And I did get a note from Jeremy that he wasn't able to make tonight's meeting. Alright, next item on our agenda, Form A. We don't have any Form As today. Chris, thank you. I will move on to uh pool of the minutes from June twelfth. We have a motion to approve them as amended and amended.
So moved. Second.
Alright, any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Next item is uh continuation of the site plan review. Um continued from February twenty seventh and the June twelfth meeting for five forty-six Main Street in Great Barrington. For proposed new building with twenty-one residential units at five forty-six Main Street. Um in the M X D zone. Hello, Mr. Scalise.
For your record, my name is Jim Scalise, engineer in Esca Design Group. Here on behalf of uh the app site plan review application five forty-six uh South Main Street AM Management two LLC. Um since our last meeting, um I took some notes and hopefully I've captured most of the questions. Um I can share my screen or I can show uh I also plotted copies, whatever you um. Where we go, show them as a panelist. Since my answer.
Can you share an option for those who are joining us virtually?
Yeah, for a panelist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I heard that. Thank you.
Yeah, um I have all my volumes off and it's giving me more messages. That's cool. That will. The um. Yeah, there's the site plan. Okay, so um since our last meeting, um. I probably am stuck in the measuring mode. Um since our last meeting, I prepared a letter with um about almost a dozen topics. The first of which was um architecture, if you just allow me to run through those. Um the first of which was architecture at our last meeting. Uh there was a conversation that uh we failed to provide elevations for all four sides of the building. Um so we've uh supplemented that with uh this plan, which shows the south and west elevations. And this was a um a slight revision. We had some labels mislabeled there, so we, I guess that was corrected by the architect. And I believe this is the correct plan um that has been submitted for the record that shows those um elevations. Um if you allow me to kind of just run through these topics, or would you like to discuss this further at this time?
Could you be slightly more descriptive for the benefit of um the folks who are joining us today? Just to provide some context. I know you understand what south elevation is, but just position the viewer and then explain where Main Street and Mahawi Street are.
So when uh we presented elevations previously, we did the uh Mahawi Street elevation and the South Main Street elevation. But we failed to give uh elevations that were really from the parking lot. And under the zoning bylaws, required that we provide elevations from all four directions. So we supplemented um that with, this is uh if you are in the parking lot looking towards Mahawi Street. And this is if you're on the site driveway, this section of the building actually is kind of protruding out of the screen. This would be the parking area and you'd be looking kind of towards uh Main Street where my cursor is. Um so those elevations are uh are illustrate what that building would look like uh from those two directions. It's generally consistent um with the overall building in that there's, you're trying to separate the entries with canopies. Um and you can create some interest, uh larger windows, um improved floor plan, we're all discussed at the last meeting. Um but these are kind of the, what I'll call the interior of the property, what the, what the building looks like.
And I know you're not the architect, but are you able to say what the height is? It is the um is the building elevation that will front on Main Street. It appears in this graphic to be taller than the portion of on Mahawi Street.
The building is, um the site's very flat. The building is thirty-three feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh which is well within the dimensional requirements in the zone, which allows two stories. Um so the uh.
You showed the, you showed that on the last ones, but these elevations, the roof pitches don't align with the original submission. You've got a twelve and twelve roof there. And and the original one was like eight and twelve, which I'm.
Yeah, twelve and twelve on the the section is, yeah, I noticed it seemed taller on that side.
Other section?
Yeah.
Well, then I I can't address that. I'm not the architect.
Excellent.
Okay. Um if I go on to item two, there was a question about the classification code used for traffic. Um so we looked at that carefully. We stand by the code that we've used all along, which is land use code uh two twenty, which relates to units. Uh apartment units, but there is a footnote in the I T E documents that allows some adjustment if the units are small. And we believe that if you look at the uh the description, that these units will meet that criteria. It does make a minor adjustment. We had about a hundred and forty trips presented and it reduces it to, I believe, a hundred and twenty-two. So there's a slight reduction um in the amount of of traffic, but um I wouldn't say overly significant one way or the other. Uh I think what I did add was AM peak hour and PM peak hour trips, which are eight and eleven trips in those peak hour times. So it's just to point out that we do not believe this is a a high generator of traffic. Uh lighting, there was some question about just the detail of the lighting and on our lighting plan, um which I can show you. The uh. It's the last page here. So on the lighting plan, we specify the lights and in the, in the top here, it gives you. And you know, I I I'm not defending it. I'm just trying to explain it to you, but these codes describe the lights in detail. But unless you have all the paperwork, which we didn't submit, you wouldn't know what that code meant. So we've, we've attached to this letter that information and we've highlighted what all those are. And um so, you know, for example, the 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 color of the light is the three thousand K that's required by your zoning. You meet all the criteria.
Look, I just said twelve feet.
There, there was a discrepancy. Twelve feet is the, is the height proposed.
It is.
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And uh.
Because I thought.
Our narrative said fourteen.
I thought it was the other way around.
I I like twelve.
Twelve is what.
I'm arguing you favor one or the other.
The, the design here is for twelve feet right there.
Yeah.
Yep, that is, that is the height and that, because that's our photo metrics to make sure we don't have light spilled. We went back and forth with our lighting consultant.
Okay.
I know a dozen times to get this right.
Okay.
It's still, but yeah, this is uh, this is what we're going with, twelve feet. So um and if you want me to, I mean, I I can go through those specifications, but that information is all provided. Um accessibility, there was a question about parking and accessibility. Um if you go to the site plan. There was, there was a question raised that potentially because we have a mixed use development, do we need us two accessible parking spaces? So we show the accessible parking space right here near the entrance to what will be the accessible unit with that end door. Um but there is a uh uh small office planned as part of this. Would, would there be a second? So that Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, as it relates to parking, is based on the overall number of spaces on the property. Uh if you're less than twenty-five spaces, you need one accessible space. So that's what uh the regulations stick away.
Um so it's based on size of the parking lot, not based on different uses and.
That's correct. Yep, so it's very specific and that's what we we follow. Uh it's five two one C M R twenty-three uh is the section and and that's what we um we follow. Um as while we're on parking, uh there was a conversation held and discussed about um some of the onsite parking originally. Um some of the onsite parking originally was considered overflow spaces, uh but through all the plan revisions, that kind of changed. So we had some grass on gravel turf parking. And if if you're looking where my cursor is in this lower left-hand corner. Um we've adjusted the dimensions of the spaces. We've uh made that paved parking. Um and in the next paragraph or so, I'll discuss stormwater. Um but uh we meet all the same stormwater criteria, so there is no harm. Uh as it related to our design. Uh but the uh those spaces are now clearly shown. We also were asked to make sure we had wheel stops in all the spaces, which we now show other than the parallel spaces, of course. But um we do show uh spaces, um wheel stops in all the spaces. Um H V A C equipment, there was a question raised, uh you know, what were you doing? So I did a just some back of the napkin kind of look and it's probably an eighteen thousand B T U unit. It'll be um a heat pump style uh mini split type system. That, that, the size of that typical unit fits on a pad. I forget that the thirty-two by twenty-two. So I drew a three foot by two foot pads a little bit. I placed twenty-two of them on the lot and I added them as impervious area. As it related to the stormwater. So if there was any question, um we had that covered. Very small uh uh units. They typically are placed on like a fiberglass pad and just set on the, on the grass. But uh we didn't, we did uh change the design and I added some screening around all those on the site plan. So you know, the, there's be some, some bushes or you know, ground cover uh around each location where we place those. And I tried to put them a couple together so that we could screen them uh more uh easily. So um that, that's the approach uh that we're taking with the H V A C equipment. Um there's a question on soils and honestly, I I work on so many different projects at the same time. I wasn't, I remembered soils, but I was honestly anxious about it. But there was a uh, I don't know, a fifteen-page soils report that I sent to you, so that.
Very exciting.
It was exciting, yeah. I was very relieved because I'm like, I remember one, but is it, so I did find it and I was able to share it. So that's part of this uh application. Um so we had wheel stops on the site plan. Um we adjusted some parking dimensions. Um we turned the turf parking to paved parking. We added some uh landscape details. I think there was some questions like about uh plant sizes. Um so we added that information. Um I believe on the, on the, on the, some of the landscape notes. Um and I don't know if I can point that out to you, but um that was part of our, so maybe that's on the site plan. But um we have notes on all the plantings. So that says park and landscape now, so there we go. So all trees to be two-inch caliper at um, you know, diameter at breast height. And all trees and plantings be native hedgerow, to be a a amidst midget arborvitae, six to eight feet on center. Planted size will be two gallons, so that we've added those notes. And uh that's a plant that we can uh trim. It's hardy. Um we wanted it to be spaced a little bit because they grow quite large. Uh we could plant more of those and then cut them down later as they grew in, so that's up to the board. We're happy to be, you know, collaborative on that, but that's our approach. And we also are very, our neighbors uh his building is very close on that side. So I I would want to coordinate um with the neighbor as it relates to this, you know, the stoop here. Uh not plant right in front of that, maybe give a little room around the end of the stairs, just to be neighborly as the approach. Um curb cut, uh the, looking at the curb cut, I know there was a question about that, but there's, there's no. Um the issue with the curb cut is, you know, we had our apron showing, you know, crossing. Uh this is all in the right of way of of Mahawi Street. Uh none of this is on our neighbor's property. Um we show a multiple curve along that edge to define our edge, allow us to plow snow. Um and we show a saw cut there as it relates to the apron. Depending on the condition and and what our neighbor wants, we're happy to work with them on that, on that apron. So if you want to make that a condition of this approval, where we want to be a a good neighbor as it relates to this. But our intention is to either saw cut this and blend it in or uh go beyond that, you know, whatever it takes to blend that inappropriately. But um we're not crossing the projection of our property line and we're working entirely in the uh right of way of 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 the public way. Um and that, so we got two items left, uh parking demand. Um there is a fair amount of discussion um from uh from folks on the street and from the the board as it related to parking demand. The, the zoning bylaw requires uh one space per unit. Um that's a very progressive number. Um uh but there's walkability, there's, I believe this was a thoughtful approach to trying to. You know, there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts and there's, and the intention is, is to maybe put a little more density. This is throughout Berkshire County in in my experience of of trying to build housing. And if we keep building housing like my father did, we're never going to solve this problem. So the intention is to build more densely. The, the casualty of that is things like this, is how do we manage parking? So um with one space per unit, there is, there is potential that there will be folks parking on the street. That's will be instances where someone's moving in or moving out, as has been said at the meetings. I don't disagree with those comments, that there will be difficulties. This applicant has um has gone out and and secured um an additional fourteen spaces offsite. That uh they have a a letter of intent on those spaces that are, you know, in walking distance. There could be a ten-minute walk like up towards um McCormick's office, the hotel there has some spaces. Um so I've submitted a couple of letters of intent to Chris for the record. Um we have fourteen spaces secured, which puts us at one point six four ratio. And if you look at the Urban Land Institute, they suggest a ratio of one point six five for rental units. So I think we're, we're now at an engineering standard if you allow us to to count those spaces. Um and we'll commit to that as part of a condition of this permit or the special permit, frankly, whatever you deem appropriate. But we believe that with those uh leased spaces, uh we've met the criteria here. We have a, what we believe is an infill project um that uh is going to take advantage of of maybe available spaces that already exist. And we think that's a a redevelopment and a smart growth principle. So we think we're meeting um a good cri- a good balance there. It's a compromise potentially, uh but it fully meets the zoning bylaws. I think from your perspective, um it it fits. Um and I think honestly, it's a, it's a good solution rather than building more paved surface, so. And with all that said, um the one uh infrastructure item that is directly related to impervious area was um that has changed because of the the parking layout uh is created more impervious area. I had turf parking. I I added the H V A C units. There were mi- minor site adjustments that we made as part of this um as it related to the walks and things. And and when we, I uh re-added up and a fresh start, went back and re-added up all the uh impervious area, first to check to make sure we met coverage, which we do. Um we're at seventy-one point five six percent, seventy-five percent is allowed in the zone. And then um the required recharge volume, which is uh the select boards issue, is uh nine hundred and thirty-eight cubic feet. But the actual system is designed at thirty-six hundred and the reason is, is we're trying to mitigate storm events, you know. So when there's a big rainstorm, we don't have a runoff problem. So that the system is actually oversized by a factor of almost four to to meet the storm events. There is a tiny increase in twenty-five-year storm from point zero seven to point one-two, which I believe was the minimus. Um you know, we're talking point oh five. It's probably beyond the accuracy of the methods we're using, frankly. Um so uh but even in the hundred-year storm, we're less than half a C F S exiting the the system. Very uh a very conservative design in my opinion. So um I think we've, those are the questions I had first off. If there's other questions that I missed, I apologize. I'm happy to try harder. Um but I believe we've, we've touched on all the topics that we discussed at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for making those um revisions and providing the supplemental information. Um one thing, just in reviewing the record that we have and comparing it to some of the comments that you've received from um some of the neighboring properties, I was hoping you could address them. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to reach you about this ahead of the meeting, so not trying to like, gotcha. But um some of the questions have revolved around why the driveway needs to go onto Mahawi Street as opposed to onto Main Street. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, um it's my opinion, you know, first of all, the travel speed on uh, you know, Route seven is higher than on Mahawi Street, so it's safer. Uh frankly, there is an existing curb cut that's there. We could go to D O T and ask for a permit. But um you know, I believe there's a safety issue as it relates to, uh I would much prefer to have vehicles exiting this driveway onto a a residential street. We're the corner lot, so we're not in the middle of the street creating traffic up and down the street. I believe most of the traffic will exit that driveway and um, you know, turn towards the highway to travel north or south. Um you know, not that all of it will, uh there's folks that could be going the other direction, obviously. But I think that, you know, if you're heading to the supermarket or a gas station, you're heading out towards Route seven. Um and and I think it's good design. I I want the driveway as far from the intersection, so I don't interfere with stacking um at that stop sign. Um I want, I want that onto a a a street with a lower design speed uh that that is safer for the uh potential occupants of this facility.
Is there a scenario where you would consider providing percentage of the exit um that, that says um right turn only? To get people to Main Street as opposed to, and then recognize signage is only as good as signage is and people can ignore it. But to drive home the intent that, you know, the desire is to have people go to the Main Street.
If the board, I would, if if that is something the board wishes to do, I would, I would prefer it as a condition. I I don't necessarily agree with that as a good design condition. I think the neighbors are going to find that if all the cars have to go out and stack, it'd be better if some of the cars went to the left. Um they're going to have a longer delay at that stop sign if I force every single car that leaves this facility to go that direction. And I, I think it's going to lower, I mean, I don't know, it won't lower the level of service because the impact just isn't there. But I think it will add a few seconds to that weight and people in their cars tend to be extremely impatient. Um I think it's a better uh uh to dilute the traffic coming out of that driveway with some going east and some going west. I believe the vast majority will still go east um just based on, you know, it's shorter, quicker. But that's entirely, if the board wishes it, I'm not here to object. It's just uh, it won't be my recommendation.
Okay. Um other questions from board members? Daniel?
All right. My name is.
Okay. We can, we can certainly have that conversation too.
I was just wondering if if Clinton Alber made the effort to reach out to the the neighbors at all, as a couple of.
Absolutely.
I, yeah, uh just for a record, I'm Fonzie on the, on the app game. I did make an effort. I, so my, in our last meeting, uh I had an opportunity to meet with David Salz and he uh volunteered to put me in contact with the neighbors to then have everyone's contact information. I left David two voice messages. I went into his house and knocked on his door, hoping that he might be there and didn't get a response. Um I was kind of out of options. I was only providing the phone number. Um I did request for an email address and he said he doesn't use email as um routinely, then he preferred that I contacted him by cells. I just said, no problem. Um so I kind of didn't do enough to that.
You didn't contact me?
I mean, reaching out to the neighborhood now is sort of irrelevant. Right, it was the, the, the project is a done deal. Nobody seems to have an interest in changing it. Talking to the neighbors now is really, is really, you know, the, the, that, 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 that translation. They should have talked.
So your name is?
I'm sorry, Alan Bogdan.
Okay. Thanks, Alan. So if you could, just for our secretary to choose.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just kidding, the public comment at, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You, you know, the reason I ask is because, you know, they make a pretty compelling argument about scale of your project and about certain other design elements, as you've included. Um I hope that you would have reached out to them. And just at least as a, a very good fit.
I, and that was the intentions. I did everything in good faith and best intentions. And the agreement that we left that night was that I was going to get in contact or we're going to have some sort of meetings. Um David volunteered and so I said, no problem. Um I left a few voice messages. I went out there, knocked on the door.
It doesn't mean it's free anymore. We're here now.
Randy? I have questions about a space that you're renting or the overflow.
Parking?
Parking.
Yep.
How, where is it and how far away is it? And can you, what, what's the length of time to walk to it?
So there's uh a total of fourteen spaces. Um the first four spaces are at five oh six Main Street, which is about two-minute walk. Um and the other one is about ten-minute walk at the Quality Inn. Um the other two spaces. Uh the intention is to start off um with the four spaces and then um as uh we progress with additional overflow spaces, we would uh then entertain the twelve things spaces.
So, so I'm sorry, could you just clarify that one more time? So it's two locations, five oh six Main and the Quality Inn and the number of spaces at five oh six is how many?
Four.
Four. And the number of quality is ten? Um just following on Jackie's question there, did you, is, shared parking is a wonderful thing, especially if you can match a residential use with the commercial use, right? Because the commercial use needs it during the day and the residential needs it at night and that's a wonderful thing to do. And so I appreciate that you're thinking of that. Did you happen to look on Mahawi Street down, the commercial properties down at the um west end? And speak to any of the property owners down there?
I did and uh I didn't get back. Well, they didn't have the uh available spaces.
Say that again.
Didn't have the available spaces to offer.
They didn't have spaces to offer? Anything more on that, Jackie?
No.
Jonathan?
Hi.
What are you waiting for?
Huh?
What are you waiting for?
Uh I'm ready with the architect to be here.
The architect is not here.
I understand.
You don't want to talk to.
I don't think we can decide if I'm going to do because the select board hasn't even made a decision on the special permit.
I mean, I've done some checking on that and I don't believe that that is the case.
What do you mean?
We could do site plan review.
Right, it was our decision in the past to wait to make sure.
Yeah.
Because this is very.
I did speak with this, with the um select board chair. And I think we find ourselves in a bit of a chicken and an egg situation. They would like us to make our decision and provide any conditions that we feel are appropriate for site plan. And I'm, I'm going to probably speak out of turn here, but my sense is that their um special permit is water quality protection overlay district. And so they're thinking very much about
Those lines.
The aquifer and the, the, the context in which they are granting the special permit. And less so about site and site development. That's my sense, just talking. And so they're sort of waiting to see what our decision is. So we find ourselves needing to talk about them in the decision. Um and so are we, are you, do you feel like you cannot do site plan review without talking to the architect there?
Uh well, we have drawings that coincide with each other that we submitted to the application. Which is bad.
Yeah, the eight on twelve is accurate.
But that's not what was submitted in the last round.
He stays, it was six and twelve. And they were all six and twelve last week.
So this, I'm not sure they're not accurate. I mean, he's got the dormer for this section of roof at a lower slope. Right, then in the, on, on the Mahawi Street elevation, which is this one. Did you want a copy of these, Jonathan?
If you look, no, I haven't. If you look at the south's elevation that was submitted, it's clearly it's a twelve and twelve.
It is, it is. And is there some reason why they, they, there couldn't be a vari- variation in those pitches?
I just think the elevation should agree with each other.
It, it are, do you think that the height is taller because it's a twelve and twelve? It, it struck me as a more volume, right?
Go to forty feet.
Right, that's true. That's true.
I'm not saying it's out of line, but I just want to know what they're building. That doesn't seem like an unreasonable request. No.
Um what would it take for you to get consistent architectural plans?
Twenty-four hours.
You know, this whole project is like it just puts a you know, it, it, it does nothing really to to help the anxiety that people feel about architects and developers. You know, and this is why as a developer, I think hopefully you'll use this as a learning experience. And if you just reach out to people, the whole project will just be better and it'll be more successful. We've seen that in this, on this board and in this process before. And if you, you know, choose quality people to work with, you'll get a better result in the end.
Let's, maybe we can.
But it.
Move on.
I mean, I can't disagree with Jonathan. I mean, we, you know, we, we're constantly harping that people change their plans after they leave this review table. But now we're, how possible could we evaluate a project? But now we're, how possible could we evaluate a project if we don't have. At least some sort of accuracy about what the intent is.
Uh, I, I can't wax poetic about the pitch of the roof, I'm trying to understand like. The footprint isn't changing, the number of units isn't changing. Is it really that big of a deal?
Why do we ask for elevations then?
I think the design concept is clear.
We ask for elevations to get the scale and character of the building, right? Yeah, these are like, in my opinion, not true elevations, they're like sketch plans, right? They're, they're, they're intended to give you an. Understood, understood. I mean, if you want to send the applicant away, that's fine and have them submit and come back at our next meeting.
It's not my goal, but.
Well, I know it's not your goal, they did not submit either timely or accurately, so that's their problem, not ours. But um. But I guess I did not personally see the pitch of the roof. As a factor that would allow us to not make a decision. I think we, there are many more meaningful things that we wanna be talking about than the pitch of the roof. I know I'm not an architect, so it's probably unfair to you guys. Sorry. And we haven't heard from Malcolm, Malcolm, do you have questions?
Well, I mean, I. I still have a question about parking, but it's not a question that this board, I mean, this clearly meets what our by law states. But I think from a business standpoint to contract with parking that, looking on Google, it's eleven minutes and a half mile. To walk to your car, if I'm in our, if we're gonna park, excuse me.
Just, yeah, just hang, hold up please.
Um. I I don't, I I do think that people are gonna end up just parking on the Hayley Street, except in the middle of winter when they have to park. The north of the street.
The select board um had some feelings on that and they're, they're discussing, thinking up, uh, no parking on one side and no overpark.
And you know, that's this.
I think.
I I think we're, we're actually, uh, my comments really have more to do with what the select board has to discuss than what we have discussed, so I'm not. Uh, I, I, I think this is a good effort to add additional parking where there's not space, I think that's a. It's a good thing to do, I don't, I don't, I I can't see that it really being new to the city, truth. Apart from the Hayley Street, they'll park on Pope Street, they'll park on Silver Street, someplace closer to.
I have a question just about, how did we resolve the abutting driveways?
I I don't think we have yet, yet we haven't gotten there yet.
I'm just kidding.
If, I'm, I'm gonna ask the public, you will get a chance to speak, but if you could just hold on right now. We're not all in alignment, we need to work some things out with the owner and so if you could just respect the process for. A few more minutes, I'd appreciate it. Um, so yes, we do need to talk about that, let's, let's talk about parking, so. This is a site plan review, we have a code and Malcolm, as you've accurately pointed out. This technically meets the code. And under site plan review, we cannot deny the site plan for some non-compliance reason. Correct, we can encourage. The applicant to consider more and closer offsite parking. And the applicant may be subject to changes in road operations based on a town decision that is separate and apart from the decision we're gonna make. Right?
Right, I mean, uh, I mean, actually, I mean, the only, the only body that can really address this is the select board. And those, and this uh special permit and and review of ten point four criteria, if they feel that. Uh, this parking doesn't meet the uh, uh, the the needs of the town, but um. Uh, as far as so I'm concerned, I don't see this as an issue that we can. You know, I, site planner group.
Not based on parking, right, but we can certainly. Encourage the applicant to find additional parking or. I mean, would you consider shrinking your project down? I imagine you've penciled the numbers, what can work and what can't work, you've heard a lot from the neighborhood that a smaller project might be. More palatable, um.
The short answer is it doesn't pencil, uh, so. I've actually went back to see, uh, the biggest issue is reducing project scope. Or the size of the project is that you make the units a lot less achievable to afford. Uh, I think the idea is to serve the community and try to at least be as affordable as possible. Um, and so when you reduce your unit count, your uh. Operation cost stays the same and so the only thing that's impacted is. Your denominator is short, a small amount and so unit cost just goes up and I don't think that's serving the community. Um, I think you want to offer something that uh. People can actually afford in the community, uh, and so only way you're doing it is by increasing your denominator.
I mean, definitely a uh different culture with these days on building.
Yeah, building costs are crazy and out of control and expensive, so I can appreciate that, um. That that makes it difficult to make a project make sense on a piece of property. Um, and it does meet the code as far as. Um, density. And it infills in town and the M X D where we are encouraging walking, right? Um. Ha, what other exploration can you do for parking just to try and assuage the, because there is a, there is a chance. Outside of this process that the usefulness of the street may. Evolve based on other town decisions, so you can't rely on the street as a parking option.
Yeah, which is why I made the best effort attempt to reach out to neighboring properties and. With different businesses and kind of being that balancing out uh residential and commercial, um. I can't, uh, the the other issue is because this is all conceptual at the moment, there's not an actual building there at the moment. Um, a lot of the feedback that I got was, well, when you actually have a building at that point. You know, we can have a more uh fruitful conversation, but at the moment it's all conceptual based is the response I've done.
I can appreciate that, um. We, I don't, I mean, we could condition it that you can't park on the street, uh, but. I don't see that we can enforce that, right, so that would just be like a good faith sort of situation, um.
I don't, I don't honestly know how we would police that, to be fair. I, we, we can definitely put in our marketing materials, which we have promised to do, that sticker park, you know, so that our tenants. Go in eyes wide open that there's one parking space per unit unless they're in the park offside, that's all built in, so the, um. That's operationally, that's probably the best.
I mean, to some degree, what we hear and you guys tell me if. If you've heard this also or heard otherwise, but. We have so many different. And slightly unusual types of housing in Great Barrington because there's such a challenge with housing and when we've talked to. People in housing at different tiers of housing. What it sounds like is people are self-selecting for the location, right? They're saying, oh, this fits my lifestyle, oh. You know, my husband and I only have one car, this is great for us and we wanna be able to walk to town and so people end up self-selecting for the housing that's available. Um. I, I agree, I, we've gotten some feedback from people that Berkshire County is very car driven because we don't really have mass transit. Um, but where is this in relationship to a bus route? Is there a stop there, is there a stop on Mahaly?
They can do a stop there. The B R T A.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I took the bus for a long time. And they come right down, well, they come, they go up there through hospital, come down Silver Street.
Yeah.
And then they come back down. So it could be, you can reach out to B R T A and that for the developer.
Yeah.
And find out. Um, the B R T A is fantastic.
Yeah. I don't know, I I I don't know what else to do about the parking other than to encourage. You know, continuing to find partnerships with commercial businesses that are. More proximate than the quality and that, I agree with you Malcolm, that's a bit of a hike, if I'm coming home with my groceries, I'm not gonna wanna. You know, lug them all the way and there's not really a convenient drop off space, right?
Can I ask a question up there or not?
No, no, um. Any other thoughts on parking?
You know, I personally don't have a problem with her parking proposal. Um, I always, when we come across these questions. I'd like to direct the public to go to Beach Street Commons, there's sixty-six units, mixed one and two bedroom. Apartments there and that parking lot is never at capacity, ever, I've been, I've been studying it. Michelle, you're, you're shaking your head, but currently there's two units available, two units available there. I've been looking at that parking lot for years. Because I sit on this board, because I sit on this board, I've been looking at that parking lot for a long time. And it is the case that we overbuild parking, there's just no question about it. Across the country, it's a huge problem. So, I understand the anecdotal and the logical reasoning. By saying that there's gonna be two bedrooms, so there's gonna be three cars there, because there's gonna be a teenager with a car too. I understand all that kind of thinking, but the fact is that there's no proof. The proof is that we overbuild parking everywhere. There's a man named Donald Shoup, he's, he's spent his entire career writing about parking. And this exact issue that I'm talking about right now, if you wanna do a study of it, I've done it. You know, Mr. Scalise is right. We need, we can't build like his father built anymore. We just can't do it, it's just a fact. We're, we're losing people. In our communities, we're losing tax revenue in our communities, we're, we are losing workers, the. Developer is making an effort to keep the price of these things down and he's not wrong. In saying that if he minimizes the units, the number of units. They will be more expensive and then you will get the people that all of you have discussed are not the right fit for our. Town or for our community. Fact is that there's just not enough space on this lot for, for more parking. Twenty-one units is twenty-one units. I mean, I don't, I I don't have a problem with it, we, town meeting doesn't have a problem with it, we took our proposal to town meeting. There was barely any discussion about it. Where he, what we do here is not make the law, we just enforce the law, the law that everybody's sitting on in the audience chooses to put into action. The project meets the law. Exceeds it by one, but it meets the law. So I don't see any, any way that we can reject or. Or have a negative recommendation based on parking.
I don't either, but I know who's right. Cause I, 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 you may be, and a global Dave has said, right, was saying, there's too much parking in Beach Street Commons. But when you have twenty-one units with multiple bedrooms with this, you know, one, one space per car. In verse candy, I don't really, that's enough, I don't see any proof of it.
Okay. Jackie, the driveway.
No, well, actually, I was just sitting here trying to figure out what you do with your groceries when you come back to the unit in the. You know, and. Walking, I don't mind walking the distance, I just don't wanna carry anything.
Yeah.
So I said, this is stupid, but I'm just thinking, could there not be that space, that extra room or someplace where this is where you put your stuff when you. Have to come in, drop it off and then go park.
Yeah, I mean, I think people in urban.
Here trying to, I, I like to walk, I like to, I don't care. I've lived where I've had to walk a long time to get to where I live.
Right, right. Yeah, a- a- and and I think people in, who are used to living in an urban setting, they're. It's customary to walk everywhere, right? It, and it's customary to um. Drop off and then take your car and park it if you have your car, so it's, it's not unusual, I think. We're honestly a little spoiled here in the Berkshires where we get to like drive ourselves to our front doors every day, um. So, yeah.
I'm, I'm just sitting here as a human being trying to figure out how we work with that parking lot that's a distance, but.
I understand.
It becomes a, you know, weird experience.
It's not how I live right now either, I I would suggest if my wife and I moved into one of these apartments, I'd be walking. And I'd be carrying whatever I need and that's the way that would work. Um, and I think, yeah, you know, lifestyle changes are part of this type of development for folks who grew up in brochures.
I was thinking I'd make one of us in the family pop a motorcycle and park it somewhere else.
Yeah.
So.
E-bike, if Jeremy were here, he'd tell us to use our e-bikes. Yeah, we do have a bike rack now, so that's an improvement. Um, so let's talk about the driveway real quick, so, um. Can, you can't do anything more than a curb.
The, the, um.
And, and your neighbor is right behind you, if there's any way you could talk to her, I, I went by there this morning just cause I wanted to have it fresh in my head, um.
What we can do on the, on the, on the, on the Easterly boundary over here, um. I think as, as we get to, you know, final construction drawings, um, if you'll let me zoom in here. I have right here, this is the setback line.
Uh huh.
And this is the building, so I have a couple of feet there that, you know, two and a half, three feet right there.
Yeah.
I would suggest that as, my surveyor will shoot me for this, but I think we would spend some money on survey and push that building is close to that. Setback line and then create that, we'll call it, I don't know, buffers of appropriate, where that strip. Um, not trying to overstate it, but.
But you can't put the air handlers there. Cause they'd be, they'd be in the public right away.
Yeah, um, that wouldn't be the public right away, that's the, that's the, that's the setback, structural setback.
Yeah, yeah, the redways much further down, yeah, yeah.
I think those accessory units could go in that, I could double check the buildings back there, but.
So if, if you could shift the whole site plan to three feet, yeah.
Three, about three feet, you know, two and a half, I mean, I think that's.
You would have room for a short fence or something that could provide some demarcation.
That would make.
Would that be better? Well, the, three is gonna be the maximum that they can do and if, and I just. I just wanna say, if you already with your business have people parking in the driveway, that may be an operational change you'll have to make because you'll have to respect the neighbor's. Property line as well, so, so, um, if you could, Jim, shift that three feet and.
But we don't mind, we don't mind trying to.
And put some fencing to demarcate, I think. My, my preference and I'll let you guys talk about it, but my preference would be a fence because it's. Vertical, it's a can, you know, one of those good neighbor fences.
Just a long fence though, just something.
Yep, just to demarcate it, I, bushes are gonna like grow into everybody's space and, um.
Gonna have a mortality rate there along the drive, uh, uh, fence makes it sound sense. I agree.
Jackie, does that help at all?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
But I was just thinking, wow, you got them to move the whole building. We have so many older fines driving in and out.
Oh, yeah.
It's safety, it's just safety.
Is your driveway, but their driveway?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's, so that dash line is the edge of their driveway, it's right on the property line.
Well, maybe both driveways can be. Pushed apart.
I have to.
I, I don't see, I'm not seeing enough to know what's going on with that other driveway and I, I didn't.
See this little dash line?
Spend a lot of time looking at it, yeah, it's, it's right on the property line, is it encouraging?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's too close, it's fine, I mean, we're not. Just on it, so. But, we'll, we'll create that as much as we can and we'll put a fence down.
Jonathan, where are we at with the architecture? How committed are you to needing architectural plans to?
I just, I just say that there's. Go through, go through your site plan criteria and see if you need perfect, accurate, exact. Site plans where if you're getting the design intent, you're understanding the flow, the character, the massing of the building. Or not. I know you want it to be.
I'd like to be consistent.
System is good, but.
I think that's the point.
Why does it impact the site?
Cause you don't know what you're getting, Chris.
I feel cynical about that though, quite frankly, because we've had so many building elevations change after we've like niggled about. Uh, you know, an awning or a roof height or a roof pitch, cause it could change during design development at the same time.
I'm not saying it's not gonna change, I'm just saying that what they've submitted doesn't agree with issue with itself.
Would you like for the record for them to submit a corrected set of plans?
I would, we make that a petition.
We can?
I, I, I think you should also consider, cause right now, as.
I, I think you should also consider, because right now, as it's drawn, you've got one-third of your building, uh, which is south facing, which is the most precious elevation you have, and there are no windows. And you might want to think about that.
We will, any other comments? We've tried to listen to every comment, so I will make it so.
I thought we went through ten point five, did we not?
No.
Oh, we usually, you gave us a handout, but we usually, before we send you away after the first meeting, we go through ten point five, because we want to make sure that we've thought through all the various items. Yeah, that's what I thought. Pardon me? Oh, we will in just a minute, yes, yes, yes. Uh, I just want to see if there's any other board related issues that we didn't touch upon. Landscaping, I think, is much better, thank you for making those changes. Okay, anything else for board members? No? Okay.
Well, is, is they're gonna move the building?
Yeah.
Do you want an accurate?
Yeah, absolutely.
So. I'll give you a revised site plan set with a final architectural set.
With final architectural schematics, because that's all they are.
Yeah.
Do you want the building height designated on the schematics?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I think one of them we're looking at it isn't.
There's one elevation.
One elevation, but I can put on, but that doesn't agree with the other.
Right, right, that's the question. Okay. All right. Okay, so, before we make any sort of decision, we would take comment on this. So if there are members of the public here who would like to comment, um, or folks that are online, I see Eileen's got her hand raised, so she was quick about that. So we'll, we'll let Eileen go, hi, Eileen.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Oh, good. Have you heard from either the fire chief or the DPW head? Was their reaction to the plans? Have they been asked to look at the plan?
Thank you, Eileen, um, I believe you provided that information with the initial application packet?
I did, and then we, uh, we sent an email, but we haven't heard back.
Um, to the chief or to, to Mr. Aberdell?
I'm not, I didn't do it personally. I mean, it's select board, I think, who's gonna reach out also.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if they've reached out yet or responses.
Okay, okay. All right, we should have that in the record and. Thanks, Eileen.
Well, I'm not sure. Is just putting it in the record adequate, what, if they want changes? What if the fire chief says that there might be problems?
They would want changes, and if the board had approved something, then if they were substantial, the applicant would have to come back to the board again.
Which means that an argument over the word substantial.
This is also a re-permitting of the project that was permitted.
Yeah.
But, but the plan has changed, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has less density, frankly, than the other.
No, 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 the layout has changed.
Yes, the layout has changed. I think I'd be comfortable taking this application up again if the layout changed again because of the fire chief. Just looking at fire code and the layout and the access on Mahawi Street and Main Street. I, I don't foresee an issue there. And with the DPW, we asked a lot of questions about the sewer connection, and they've got a grinder pump, and we have tons of capacity in the sewer plant and tons of capacity in the water system, so I don't, I don't foresee that as an issue either. Yeah, and the building being sprinkled, yeah.
Are these, weren't these findings that should go to the special permit granting authority? Before they issue their permit?
It's a good question, again, I think they're focused mostly on the water quality element.
Point of a special permit, that just opens up the whole project.
It, it does, it does, we can certainly make that recommendation to them.
I thought that was a requirement of special permit, the documentation that I had reviewed by.
I don't know off the top of my head.
But is it required for the water protection special permit?
That's what Malcolm is saying, he thinks it may be. I mean, the condition under ten point four, which again is with select board, is adequacy of utilities and public services, right?
Right.
All right, so, so you are going to act on this without having had any feedback at all from either the fire chief or the DPW head? Or the police, although I don't know quite what their involvement would be, what their purview.
Do you see that as a, as a condition, I, I, or excuse me, as a requirement, Eileen? Because adequacy is, you know, like you said, what's substantial, I think adequacy is similar.
It was common sense.
Well, common sense would tell me that that building has frontage on two roads and is very accessible. And in our other comments and discussions with DPW about capacity at the sewer plant, our, our sewer plant has tremendous capacity.
I'm looking at, at it and seeing trees that could block a fire truck and parked cars that could block.
We can add it as a condition to any approval that we make, or we can kick the permit back until we, until we have some feedback from those two bodies. We don't have to conflate, it's a good point.
Thank you.
Anything else, Eileen?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
At that, at this moment.
The answer to Malcolm's question about review in the water quality protection section, it states that the SPGA will determine in conjunction with the Board of Health, Conservation, Town Engineer, Public Works, Plenary Board, so they, they will get this and they should use it as criteria.
Right, also, any other board or?
I gotta be honest, I think that we are making a mountain out of a molehill here.
The problem is we have a special permit, and it's like.
And we have a special permit granting authority, and so if this is a big concern, I would say that we recommend back to the select board that as part of their consideration for special permit, could they please make sure the record is complete with regard to having some input, be it an email or a letter from the fire chief and the DPW superintendent?
That's the point I was trying to make earlier.
Okay.
And because there is no requirement to, for us to get input from other boards for site plan reviews.
Sure.
But there is, there's special permits.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's where the, the other board input should come in.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that we've been privy to all the communications going back and forth to select board, and I have not followed their packets to see what content is in there, so, so that's a reasonable recommendation back to the select board. Okay, we can make sure we do that. Got it here as a note, okay. Anybody in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Julie, and I'm here on behalf of the tree committee. We are concerned that there are no provisions may safeguard the heritage sugar maple on Mahawi Street.
What, can you please explain that in more detail, because they are preserving that tree?
Wait, well, we'd like to know how. We are asking that the tree be safeguarded by creating some kind of barrier to the extent of the drip line before any heavy equipment comes onto the site.
Okay, I think that's a reasonable request, so you guys can do that.
There is no objection.
Okay, yeah. Anything else?
Will somebody oversee that, make sure that that is implemented?
Um, we'll put it as a condition to site plan, and then it goes to the building official. And our new building official is much more agreeable to conditions than helping us police those, yeah.
Yeah, because we noticed that it is being preserved on the site plan, but the reality is that once heavy equipment is anywhere within the drip line, it impacts the roots. That, you know, the death of the tree would be a long, but, you know, slow, but eventual reality. Want just to make sure, just from like observing other construction around, and having quite managed to really safeguard these larger trees.
Yeah, I, I think this is one thing we were happy to see with this proposal, opposed to the earlier proposal, because it does provide a setback from that tree, um, that wasn't. It, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what the extent of the tree is.
Made an effort to plot it on there, so that face of the building is consistent with the drip line. We, we shifted the building to the maximum practical extent, and we, we bent over backwards to try to save that.
So you're significantly out of the drip line, okay. Yeah, thank you, Julie.
Even with the shift, it's all over?
Yeah, the shift, yeah, the whole building, yeah, because the whole building.
Wait, 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 hold on. There is no way they will stay a hundred percent out of the drip line of the tree, and I, I won't, I won't restrict it to that extent. They are, they are doing, I think, an admirable job to try and minimize impact in the drip line, and for preservation of the tree, I think that's good, and I think the comment that Julie's making about demarcating that drip line is an excellent comment, because it will help flag for the contractors, because contractors don't always pay attention to, like, rules, so if there's something physical there, like snow fence or something like that, then it's, it's in neon lights, basically, stay out of the drip line of the tree. So I think, I think that's reasonable, and, and we should definitely include that as a condition.
Has there been a traffic study?
There has not been a traffic study, um, we do not believe that this rises to the level of impact that a traffic study is required.
So has there been a traffic study waiver?
There has been no waivers granted thus far, um, but it is at our discretion that we can ask for a traffic study. We've reviewed traffic data as provided by, um, the engineer, and we've reviewed some revised traffic data after asking some questions, um, and that will be the basis of our consideration tonight.
Well, I think this, this whole thing is actually setting the bad precedent. I don't think there's enough parking, and I've heard a lot of comments about the traffic. To have parking spaces ten, eleven minutes down the road, what if you have a baby? What if it's raining? What if it's cold and windy? What if it's icy? It's just, I don't think anyone on that board would want to live under those circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Well, Mahawi. I mean, I've talked to you guys before. I'm not sure I already have anything to say, but I can't feel as though I need to speak nevertheless. I think that, I think that the community has, has raised really legitimate questions that are driven by the scale of the project, and I really haven't heard any pushback from either the planning board or the select board on the basic plan, the basics, the basic structure of the plan. And, you know, that, the scale has basically just been accepted. I think people are doing a lot of due diligence on a lot of the minutia around, around the plan, and I think that's great, but but I really don't think that the, the root cause of the, of the concern in the neighborhood is what they even, even close to address. You know, I, I, I hear over and over again how desperate Great Barrington is for housing. My wife and I live in a little apartment, we've been looking for a house that we can afford, can't really find one, I totally get it. Um, but I think a couple of points still need made. You know, this unit does not have twenty unit, twenty-two units packed onto it, six tenths of an acre to respond to Great Barrington's housing needs. I mean, if that's, that's a convenient selling point, and we may think that it's a, you know, it's a good feature, but that's not why they're, why they're doing it. You know, the development has twenty-two units, because that's as many as they could fit in, and the more units they have, the, you know, the quicker their return on investment is going back. And that's fine, they're, they're, you know, they're a business to make money, that's what they're supposed to do, I don't have any problem with that. You know, they don't have to worry about preserving the character of the Mahawi Street neighborhood, that's not their responsibility. That's your responsibility, that's the select board's responsibility, and I don't really see anybody really stepping up to that. You know, they're just doing what you'd expect them to do, and we're simply letting them do it. In a second, you know, this is not giving twenty-two housing units to Great Barrington, that's simply not the right way to look at it. If the developer had reached out to the community, not now, you know, not, not yesterday, but a year ago, when they started to try to develop this program, you know, it's not as though people on Mahawi Street are anti-development, and we all know that that lot is gonna have something on it eventually. If they had reached out to us, we would have come up with something that was acceptable to both parties, and it would undoubtedly have been smaller, it would have been maybe in the eight to twelve unit range, which means that what this is really giving us is like ten units more. And that ten units is basically taking it from being of a scale that is vaguely, vaguely fits within the neighborhood, to some, you know, monstrosity that, that doesn't fit within the neighborhood at all. And, you know, so we're, we're not getting twenty-two units, we're getting maybe ten. You know, those ten units, and, you know, those ten units are gonna double the size of the development. And, you know, we have, you know, close to four thousand housing units in Great Barrington. If you think that ten more units is gonna make some significant effect on the, on the housing market in Great Barrington, you're simply dreaming. You know, thirty people, maybe thirty people in those ten units, they're gonna have any effect on the downtown hub, which we hear about constantly. So, I'll get back to the bylaws for a sec, right? The mixed-use transitional zone is, you know, the, the purpose of that is in nine eleven one, and if you read it, which I'm sure you have, it basically says that the MXD is established to preserve and enhance the mix of residential and retail uses and to maintain the existing character of the area. This is protective language, right? The MXD was not created to give Great Barrington, you know, a, you know, a place to stick high-density housing developments that wouldn't even get off the ground anywhere else within walking distance of downtown.
That, I just am gonna ask you to, um, just recognize that's your opinion. Okay, because the MXD was actually written to protect a lot like that from becoming a Dollar General.
Okay.
Okay. And, and recognizes that there is a mix of commercial and residential in that area, and recognizes that it is in an area that is walkable both to the Big Y and to the downtown, and so presents tremendous opportunity for housing.
I'll accept, I know, I, I accept that. I won't be stepped entirely, I mean, the footprint of this unit is, uh, is twenty thousand square feet, or almost twenty thousand square feet between the parking lot and the building. You know, there's nothing else on that, that's more than ten times larger than any other, anything else on the block. It's gonna double the number of people and double the number of cars using a single driveway. It covers seventy-five percent of the lot, where everything else on the block is more like thirty percent. So, you can say that the MX, the MXD was meant to keep a Dollar General out, but the language specifically says that it is supposed to preserve the character of the neighborhood. And I don't see how any reasonable person would say that something with these characteristics preserves the character of the neighborhood, I just don't. So, I, I, I know, I, I respected, maybe it was really looking at more commercial, at more commercial developments, but the scale of the, of this development is not in keeping with the character of the, of the area, it's simply not. And then I guess, I, I just kind of cut into, to talk about the parking one more time, we've talked about it a lot. But, you know, to Pedro's point, you know, I could be, yeah, I think, I, you know, we made this point a lot, we really believe that the parking is insufficient. You know, I could be, yeah, I think, I, you know, we made this point a lot, we really believe that parking is insufficient. Off-site parking is obviously not going to really address that in, in any meaningful way. It's perfectly legal to park on Mahawi Street, you can't tell people not to. You can, you know, even if you put it in the lease, there, there's, there's no way to keep it from parking on Mahawi Street. Um, and then, and it's not just the twenty-two units and the twenty-two parking spots. There's no provision for snow storage on the, on, in the plan. The first time we get an eight-inch snowfall, I don't know where they're planning on putting all the snow, but I would assume that it's going to be piled into some of those parking spots, because I don't really see any place where they could put it. There's no provision for visitors who are not allowed to use those parking spots and are not going to be allowed to use the off-site spots either. Those, you know, those people are going to be on Mahawi Street, both visitors to the apartments as well as visitors to the office. There's no provision for lawn care or maintenance and so, you know, there, there's no way for, to get those people off the road, so those vans and trucks and trailers are going to be on the Mahawi Street. There's no provision for move-in and move-out. So those thirty-six long, thirty-six-foot-long box trucks, they're likely to be on the Mahawi Street. And yes, you know, the other properties on the street have those kinds of things happening too, but it is a low-density area, so those issues are, are diffuse, but you know, up and down the street. All of this will happen between the stop sign at Route Seven and the driveway to the unit and, and you know, it is going to be a problem, you know, for sure, and the Mahawi Street is only twenty-two feet, eight inches wide. You can look at any parking standard and they'll tell you that you can't park in any volume on that width street, it's dangerous. Um. The National Fire Protection Association, the N F P A, states as best practice, as, as normal practice, that you need a twenty-foot unobstructed access. Obviously, you have access through the driveway to the, to the property, but if with cars parked on the Mahawi Street, you don't have that, that access, you, the cars, you know, and uh, emergency vehicles coming down Route Seven to respond to an issue on Mahawi Street won't be able to turn on the highway and have anything like twenty feet, they'll be lucky if they have ten feet. Yeah, that, so, you know, bottom line is, there are all kinds of band-aid's we can talk about. Off-site parking and, you know, changing that to, you know, to one side of the street parking, which really won't solve anything. Banning parking altogether, there are all kinds of things we can talk about, but the root cause of the problem is that the, is that the development is simply too big. There are too many lot, too many apartments for the size of the lot and they're not able to provide the necessary parking. So all these are simply band-aids, the root cause is not being addressed by anybody. And I guess that's pretty much all I have to say from that subject, I'm sorry, I've, I've said this stuff before, I don't mean to be redundant.
No, it's fine.
Um, but I do feel strongly about it, so, um, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Another comment, if you'll let me.
Um, I will, can I go to Barbara first and then come back to you please? Barbara? Hi there.
Hi.
Barbara, come here.
Yeah, Barbara Matts, twenty-two Mahawi Street. Um, I, I do have a few short comments, but I, I was wondering if I could ask a clarification on the situation with the driveway? Because a, a statement was, was made that it's just much safer to go from Mahawi Street onto, uh, onto Route Seven than it is from their driveway and that sounds to me counterintuitive. First of all, with all the problems that there are already with the driveway where it is, but I don't understand how coming into this traffic on Mahawi Street and then trying to come on and off of Mahawi Street onto Route Seven is safer than just going from your streamlined, very private park, driveway into, uh, on and off of Route Seven, I, I just don't see it. And, and I think that the safety issue is a major issue for us, because there's a lot, a lot that's affected by the traffic coming onto Mahawi Street and then onto Route Seven. As, I mean, I've, I've, we've talked about this before and I've said it for the record, but it's just causing a lot of, uh, dangerous situations for people who live on Mahawi Street, for kids getting the bus, for people trying to get in and out of their driveways, for a whole range of people and I so I would just like to know the logic behind that, it just doesn't sound, uh, make any sense to me.
I, I have my opinion on that just based on my own experience, but Jim, are you able to speak to her question about having the driveway where it is in relationship to the intersection? And what that means for turning movements into the driveway versus turning onto Mahawi Street?
The Mass D O T has policies on curb cuts being adjacent to existing, uh, roadway curb cuts. So if a vehicle, for example, is leaving Mahawi Street, traveling easterly and then turns south or takes a right and somewhere from our driveway is exiting and turning left, it creates a conflict. Um, they're very close together, it's, uh, the travel speed on that street um, is such that I believe that that would potentially create an unsafe condition. So it's, it's my professional opinion that where we show the driveway is the appropriate and safest place for this development. Um, it minimizes curb cuts on the state highway, which is one of their mandates. Um, and also, uh, avoids placing traffic into the stacking of vehicles on Mahawi Street.
I don't, I don't understand what, first of all, why is avoiding the stacking on Mahawi Street? And secondly, there are curb cuts all up and down Route Seven. I, I just, I just don't see it and I, I think that it's just, um, it's, you're creating a danger where there doesn't need to be one. It's the same turn, whether it's, whether it's from Mahawi Street or from your driveway, it's the same turn. It's just a few feet up or down. I, I'm sorry, I, 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 it's very disturbing to me, because I think it creates many, uh, maybe, maybe you think it's better for your residents, which I don't even agree with, but I think you're just creating problems for everybody else. And I think, uh, weighing the two, I think, um, you're creating a lot more problems than you're, than you're solving. So, anyway, that's, that's my opinion, I'm sorry, I, I think that it's just creating a major danger. So, um, anyway, if I, uh.
Anything else, Barbara?
Yeah, I would just like to move on and make a few comments, um. My memory of the, uh, planning board meeting from, uh, when the site plan for the five forty-six Main Street project was first introduced was that it was sent back to the drawing board for being too ugly, uh, that that was not what we want to set people's first impressions when they approach our town. I was reminded of the article in the Smithsonian Magazine from, I think, two thousand twelve or thirteen, when we were cited as the number-one best small town in America. One of the things I seem to recall from that article was one small piece of it that described the uniquely picturesque approach coming up from the south along the mountains, farmlands, the Housatonic River, uh, leading the traveler toward town. And to this description, I would add the tasteful interwoven neighborhoods, each with its own subtle character. So maybe these revisions comply with the letter of the town bylaws, but I'm sorry, they certainly don't comply with the spirit of our town bylaws. To me, this new site plan looks even more ugly, I'm sorry, but it looks even more ugly and out of proportion to anything that we could envision for this small lot approaching town. And you think of all the other, um, uh, construction sites that have been done in town, we're talking about multiple acres of land. This is just over a half an acre. What this contractor is proposing to bring to our community is a characterless urban pillbox stuffed into an otherwise scenic six-tenth acre setting. And part of the frustration, many in our community, of many in our community is that it's an embarrassment, lacking in creativity or respect for our vision, our town vision from our, from our, our master plan. But beyond this embarrassment is another frustration. After our B-two zone transitioned into a mixed-use zone, town bylaws were established, quote, "to minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity," unquote. And it was assumed that the bylaws would be applied equally to all. I understand that in certain circumstances, special permits might necessarily be considered, but it seems that several existing properties here on Mahawi Street are on adjacent blocks or feeling infringed upon with their property either compromised by aspects of the site plan or that some mixed-use, mixed-use restrictions placed upon them are not being required of this new mixed-use property. New housing, new neighbors, they can all potentially help strengthen, strengthen us as a community. Great Barrington is currently engaged in a number of major community projects and we really can't afford to become fragmented. We have a strong base in our community here. And I just ask you, please engage with us to consider a scaled-down project of the five forty-six Main Street lot that doesn't embarrass, overwhelm, or displace the families and businesses already established here. With some thought, maybe we'll make it to number-one best small town again, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Claudia?
Yeah, so as far as the driveway goes, I think that the D O T should be consulted. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be consulted, but I want to actually quote out a business release's conclusion, number two. Traffic flow and parking have been designed to move in a safe, efficient manner and will not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. But according to the neighborhood, that's not exactly accurate. So I also would like to state that I really feel that this board making a positive recommendation that the select board would be really negative under section ten point four-two of the zoning bylaw of the special permit criterias. I think the select board would be hard-pressed to grant a permit based on two. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, and number four, neighborhood character and social structures. Um, I hear that this project is going to be seventy-two percent of the lot coverage. That's kind of extensive, I think there was maybe four parking spaces that were going to be grass that are now becoming blacktop. This sounds like an awful lot of blacktop, very little green space and it sounds much more like a commercial-looking project in a mixed-use residential district.
Okay.
But I also feel like I'm talking, uh, to, uh, what would it be? The air, I guess.
Okay, um, Estelle's iPad?
Hi, uh, I'm Estelle Bogdanoff of twelve Mahawi. I live directly across the street from the project. Um, I have two questions first and then I have some comments. So my first question is there is a small office. I would like to know if management is planning to use that office or if it's going to be leased out and why is there no bathroom in it?
Um, my, my, my understanding is that, and we discussed this at one of our earlier meetings, that that is their like superintendent's or, um, leasing space that they need to have, uh, that office available for the operation.
In that case, I think my, uh, I think Alan would probably know this better, but that does not make it mixed-use then. Um. Secondly, um, I want to, uh, I would like to know what they envision the rates to be. I know it can fluctuate, but I'm curious. They said it's not affordable, so, market, I'm, I would like to know what they envision the rent to be.
Market rate.
Their market rate.
Market rate is what we understand.
But are they, what are they saying is market rate?
Um, I don't know, my understanding is that'll be calculated as, you know, what, whatever the construction costs are and whatever their return on investment is. Uh, we, we, we are not in a position to obligate the developer to tell us of, um, a range of, of rents that may happen, because we have no view into the actual construction costs.
And that, but I, um, being a renter and as my husband said, looking either for a larger apartment or with two bedrooms or more or a house. Um, unless you're going to go into one of the fancier places on Railroad Street or the new garage, market rate is not what I heard quoted at the select board meeting and it's much less, so I don't know how viable this project is. Now, my comments are, one, the driveway is directly across the street from our driveway, especially now that it is being moved. My landlady and landlord have a newborn baby, which is why they are not at this meeting, and two other children. There are other children down the street, getting in and out as it is can be a problem. I strongly urge that, like Barbara said, that this not be, there not be the driveway on Mahawi Street. Um, so that's, I, I have great concerns about it. The other, uh, thing I would like to note is that I was a community organizer for many, many years. I, I was in public health as, um, a community educator for over thirty years. I have been home for the last up to weeks since the last planning meeting. I know that Jose and Aislinn have been home, Barbara has been home. The woman down the street didn't even know that this was happening. So to say that you tried one person doesn't.
I'm sorry.
Eddie.
Brain with me. Are you asked?
What I'm, so I'm commenting on, last time at the planning board meeting, you said work with the neighbors and the developer of the property said that he had reached out to one neighbor. Um, that he was going to coordinate it, but I'm sorry, that's not how you do it. You knock on every door, you leave a thing, you call a meeting, you ask for input. And I really don't believe it was done with sincerity. I believe that you want to make money, great, my uncles were developers, some were very, very big developers and some were smaller. I understand developers. But again, I'm going to reiterate what Barbara said. The driveway is dangerous, there has been no communication with the neighborhood at all. There has been, and this could all have been offset at the beginning. You could have had a beautiful project, maybe with more upscale apartments if you're doing market rate. Maybe you could have talked to the town about how, including some affordable apartments so people could walk to town. I just really feel that as Alan and other people have said, the planning committee, maybe your hands are tied, maybe not, I'm not going to be the judge of that. And the select board have dropped the ball on this and are not paying attention to what's going on. I had a woman walking down the street and I, it turned out she was staying next door at the Wingright. And I told her what was going on there and she was from North Carolina and she said, oh my God, I hope they don't do to this town what our town did. Which, she said it was this beautiful town, yes, we need housing and I volunteer with construct, I know we need housing. But, she said they turned it into someplace unrecognizable and that's what I feel this development is going to be. It's going to make us unrecognizable. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. Michelle?
Can you share with me our subject in the history, I'm only speaking because of that and other meetings and the one thing that keeps coming up is communication with the neighborhood. And we know people, countries go the more over, um, communication, so, um, after the last planning board meeting, we had the conversation right out front of the town hall for quite a while with the developer and you and, and everything and I'm, it sounded actually quite enthusiastic about communicating with the neighborhood. I don't know what happened thereafter, uh, because it's some, it's not my neighborhood, but I don't, I live in a neighborhood that things have not gone well. But it just seemed like the developer was on board with communicating with the neighborhood. Uh, it seems like we were going to help the developer communicate with the neighborhood and it's like, wow, this is how things should happen. As just an observer, I'd like to know what happened. What, because it keeps coming up over and over that this developer didn't knock on doors and everything. Uh, all right, okay, could he have knocked on doors? Yes, he could, um, but I find neighborhood meetings to be very beneficial. Uh, sometimes taking it outside of this type of purview and putting it in a more one-on-one type of situation. I, I do feel it's beneficial. I, I do feel it's beneficial.
Yeah.
And I do agree with you, Pedro, on that. And I think the rest of the planning board feels the same way. So just as an observer, I want to know what happened.
I, I can't speak to that.
Let me say some responsibility. I'm the neighbor who's broke we bought after the meeting, our David Souls from twenty-nine May Street. And I'd like to be accountable. I, I work in ten counties, and that's why we're still getting here tonight. I, I'm quite spread out. And so I sort of overpromised that night in terms of my enthusiasm and saying that I could be um a real facilitator for dialogue, just because I'm actually, I'm, I'm on the road too much um to be able to really fulfill that. But I just want to make the point that I did make that commitment to the developer, and I want to speak on behalf of, of the developer's decency and his openness to communication. Um, I was very um heartened by that because um I, I don't need to go over my comments again. But I do think it's about putting five pounds of flour in a two-pound bag. And I think the developer is not the individual who is, 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 is the vision that is in that framework. I think he is open to communicating with us, and I think I, I, I would like to see that happen.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and, and so, Michelle, you, we can't obviously facilitate. But for many, 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 many years, we have encouraged applicants, and oftentimes it's neighbors who haven't even talked to each other that, you know, I want to put an addition on my house and, oh, everybody's upset about it, but um go talk to your neighbors, right? And so a number of years ago, it's got to be more than five, we amended the application to say, have you talked to your neighbors? Just to try and like encourage it, right? Um, I, I agree, it, it can resolve a lot of things.
I, well, on both sides, I hate to see somebody get beat up or something
Yeah.
that he was enthusiastic about, and maybe somebody else in the neighborhood
Yeah.
can take on the role as coordinator. I know I've done it
Sure.
before
Yeah.
various situations.
Yeah.
So, uh, because it seems a little sad to me that some of this could maybe be resolved somewhat if there was a neighborhood meeting.
Sure.
Again, it doesn't fall under you, uh, but I, just because people are here right now, uh, maybe you could work something out.
Yeah, and Mr. Souls, I appreciate you um sharing your comment with us. That's helpful and provides context.
Yes, to everybody present.
No, no, no apology necessary on our end.
I really was hoping to be able to step in in a more supportive way. I do have that spirit.
I appreciate that. Uh, um, are there other comments from members of the public or online? Yes, sir.
Uh, Brian Hazel from seventeen Hayway. I do understand that this belief fits into the bylaws, but when we were going through the process through my next uh use, you get the planning board and the community came up with five conditions. Those five conditions alone seem very pleasing for most of the other people uh in the neighbors that I've talked to. And it shrinks the project enough in order to still fit on the prop, um, on the property. One of the major concerns was setbacks. Setbacks all talked about in those meetings are for um space in between the two properties and non-disruption of the, of the adjoining properties. I don't see how this pro, this project does anything for that for setbacks. Having twenty-one cars drive up and down the side of my property too, because I abut it at the bottom. Um, doesn't sound like it's doing anything to not disrupt my property. Let's get out of the setbacks. I wasn't allowed to store snow into my setbacks, dumpster in my setbacks, parking in my setbacks, or driveway in my setbacks. None of these happened on my next use. It can happen by law, but this board and most of you being on it helps set a precedent in the neighborhood to eliminate that or, or hold setbacks more important and, and provide some privacy and some respect to the neighbors around. Now, it does shrink this project. It probably shrinks this project by about eight units because you have to come off of the manville or the, the abutting property to the south, and you have to come off the property to the west. It's two feet. I think that's an honorable gesture. But the other thing is, is these are not fixed pieces. They can be changed. The prof, the project itself, the building can be shrunk. This is thirty thousand square feet. The eleven houses and properties on the street are thirty thousand square feet. This doubles the square footage in one property. There's a minimum in your bylaws that's five thousand square feet. Why is there not a maximum? What, this is, it, it's too big. It does the scale of it. If the bylaw read by Barbara is true, the scale is the same scale as every other building on the block. There is not a thirty thousand square foot uh residential unit in at least what the post is one is Windrush Commons, right? And even further, if that's the case, if we're doing this, then let's do it for low-income housing. That a market rate level, it's the same ones as the co-op or other things. They're extremely elevated in, in price. This is not an affordable unit. It's over twelve million dollars to build alone. Like, this is crazy. Like, can you guys re, still in the law, suggest the same conditions of those pieces? Twenty-five-foot setback, not twenty-four-foot setback from a week, and everything off the setbacks to be respectful to the neighbors.
Okay.
So just one point. I mean, in your narrative, you state that the building footprint is seventeen hundred feet. When you double that, it doesn't add up to thirty thousand feet.
Yeah, what is the building footprint, Jim?
Um, I don't know. On the first page, it says seventy-hundred.
Seventy-eight hundred is the footprint.
So be more like fifteen, fifteen thousand.
So.
So I think it's about twenty thousand square.
But
Well.
just to be clear.
Yeah.
Uh, Richard Stanley's building on, which abuts this
Yeah.
on, on
Mandel.
Mandel. Uh, is eleven, over eleven thousand square feet on a lot that's just over half the size of this lot.
Yeah, that is true. That's the one that I was thinking is most analogous.
And, and also the Wainwright is over seven thousand square feet. You know, rough, uh, this is obviously rough, but seventy-eight hundred.
Only footprint?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I just, you can see.
So fifteen thousand.
I missed a little at the corners, like I just quickly went around it.
Right.
But I'd be off, yes, but generally, that's the sense.
So, so fifteen thousand square feet. I, I mean, I, I am hearing all the comments. Um, and as I said some time ago, this does meet the bylaw, and in site plan it complies. And so we can't say you can only do fifteen units. We can't say you must do a smaller footprint. We can't. It's within the setbacks for the structure. I hear what you're saying, Brian. Um, but it is within the setbacks for the structure. Um, and it is providing the parking that is required in the bylaw. And so we cannot deny a site plan, so that, so I need you guys to understand that. Um, we can provide reasonable conditions. Um. I did want to get to the point about the mixed use, and we did have a conversation about the mixed use. Uh, I think there was a comment from Mrs. Bogdanoff about the mixed use. Um, when we talked to the applicant about this, I can't remember if it was, I think it was the last meeting we asked this question. Uh, they have a third-party company that will be leasing that space and running operations for them. So that does technically meet the mixed-use piece. So it's not, it's not um the same owner and same operator. So it does technically meet the mixed-use requirement, and that was a question that we had the last meeting. Okay.
Just to the, the lady's point.
Yes.
Building code will require you to put a bathroom.
She's right.
Yes. And, and we should be really clear that the plans that we are looking at are schematic in nature. At this level, no one goes to the detailed design because they don't know if they're even going to get approval. They need a special permit. So it is a good point. Yes, they will need a bathroom. But we, the planning board does not approve floor plans. So the building has to be further detailed designed and then built to building code. And so whatever code requires according to the uses, that's what will be there. That's what's going to trigger things like sprinklers, bathrooms in the office. Um. And then any number of other provisions, energy code and all of that, right? Yes, sir.
If you have a public access office, which is what that would be, then technically, do you not need a handicap park? Handicap accessible?
Mr. Scully spoke to that right at the outset. And the handicap parking does provide um the provision in the code, in the supplemental information that was provided to us says that the number of handicap spaces is not based on use, it's based on total number of spaces in the parking area.
Point is, if it's accessible to the public, if some office has a handicap ramp and it's people going there, there needs to be a handicap bathroom as well.
That'll be a provision of the building code that'll come out in the construction documents. We're only focused on the site plan. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Christina, so for Division Street, um, not being at these meetings regularly and knowing very little about, um, actually without I think the question is about is it this, who in town is um thinking about issues of relationship trust? Because if this moves forward, you know, so I don't know the, like, the next steps, like, for it moving forward or not moving forward. But um, there is a lot of home upset people and that same um, in my ignorance of this project, that have very, very valid concerns about safety and neighborhood character and um, you know, traffic and um covering green space with um um asphalt. And so I guess I just wonder, you know, I think that this has been, this is a longstanding issue, right? Like the question of something gets green lighted and then gets filled, and people are upset, and there's this like rupture that never and then the town, then the town is like, there's a perception that the town is not, doesn't care about citizens. And citizen opinion, and so I understand what you're saying, granted, you're saying like under the codes, like this is what our job is, is to adhere to these codes, but I guess wonder it's like whose job is it? This is kind of like certain point is there?
It, do you want me to respond, or do you want me to just accept your comment?
No, I, I know it's a, I'm, it's kind of a question for you all as, um, it's a real question.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, Chris, you want to speak to that?
No, I, I, I'll speak to it, and I'll speak to it as an individual. So, so you are Great Barrington, I am Great Barrington, all of you who are here are taking time out of your evenings. You are Great Barrington. We are all Great Barrington, right? So we all individually have a responsibility, in my opinion, to do things like this, to be civically engaged, right? As far as development is concerned, we have a really expansive process in the community to get to a point where we get here tonight in the nitty-gritty of laying out one parcel. So I wanted to spell the thought that this is a green space. This is a, a lot that is owned by a individual in this community who has put forth other development proposals over the last few years. Um, it is not a park, but if the community wanted to
Previously developed.
acquire it as a park, that would be a different conversation, right? But this is, this is a piece of property that someone owns, and in the context of our laws here in our community that we, as people who go to town meeting and vote on things over many big periods of time, have decided that this is a developable lot, and we would like to see some sort of development that benefits our community here. We, we started with um a, a master plan that was approved in twenty thirteen, which was a huge community effort to sort of set a framework for what do we envision for our community. And then that master plan has really been a, a guiding star for this board, the planning board. It's, it's our job to sort of see that master plan implemented. And we do that by um, by reviewing the vision that was set in that master plan and then trying to translate that into land use laws, which is like a really sort of like wonky sort of thing. Uh, and put forward zoning amendments at town meeting and then encourage people in our community to come to town meeting and to come to our processes. We're putting zoning together and learn about it and then vote on it so that we all feel like we forgot a little bit of ownership in it. And then what happens after that? So that's the process here. An M X D was envisioned for this area. And this board held, we did walking tours and we had uh meetings and public hearings and came up with a draft uh local uh bylaw, took it to town meeting, was voted on. Um, it's actually what allowed Mr. Hazelton to have his mixed-use development um on his property. And so now we're looking at another proposal within that M X D zone. And so I don't want this to be an us and them, in my opinion. This should definitely not be an us. So this is, this is a culmination of, we have gone through a lot of steps to get to this point. And then it, it is still the private property owner's right to put forward a plan for development within the framework of the laws that we as a community have adopted. And I recognize it's emotional for people to see change in the community, and this space has been green before, but it has had a number of development proposals and it had development on it before. Um, so, so that's my opinion. I, I, I don't want this to be a divisive process, but there has to be education that we are working within a framework. And this board has only so much that we can do at this point in time.
I just, maybe you, um, not sure if you interpreted what I was saying as a complication. I actually have read the master plan and I am familiar and I've voted on that in the town meeting. That's not what I'm, it's, it's an actual specific question about this plan and the concerns. Is there any, given how far along this goes, is there any pausing that can happen to address what some of the people are saying? So there is an idea of, of a conversation that's happening with the neighbors, the developer, the architect, or whoever. There are concerns about safety, so it's a, it's a technical question, not about how we got here with zoning. I actually didn't know that. It's, it's, um, and I'm not meaning to confront you guys. This is actually a specific question about this plan in the process of green lighting it and the intersection with neighbors' concerns. Is that clear?
Yeah, so from the site plan standpoint, um, we've been review, this will be our, tonight is our third meeting reviewing this application. Um, and within the framework of the site plan review law, um, the applicant has met our criteria. Um, at our February meeting, we went through the criteria and we evaluated whether or not we needed more information about various things. Um, and so the site plan does not have um a requirement for a public hearing. Um, and we have very limited role in conditioning, as I've said a couple of times tonight. Um, and so we cannot um deny this. So there is not a denial option here. Um, so our process is to evaluate it as it compares to the zoning law and make a decision based on the criteria for site plan review, which, which we have been doing the last three meetings. So, um.
See, the, the special permit process is a different process. That is completely a discretionary process. And I would advise everybody sitting at this chair to understand what that means, that it's discretionary. That yes, the permit they're going to grant is for water quality. But they have to go through the criteria that you can find in the bylaw at ten point five, and there are points there. And you, you sort of have made points on there that are debatable, that you can bring up to the select board. That's a place where this can happen. To Giovanina's point, though, you know, we can't facilitate that kind of conversation that you're, that you wish happened. We wish it happened to. At every meeting where we have a difficult project like this, we always encourage all the parties to get together and speak because it's really them.
To be as a community liaison, why don't you volunteer to? Um, thank you very much.
Okay, so the way this process works right now is um, the provision everyone in the room is commenting under is a provision that provides equal time for um, um, members of the public to provide comment on a, an application before a decision is made. At this point, we are two hours into discussion almost. Um, I see, um, I see no new hands being raised. So I'm going to just say we, we've had more public comment on this than we have presentation by the applicant. I was keeping an eye on it. It was about twenty-three minutes. Um, and so I think we need to move on with Um, and so I think we need to move on with our process. Okay, yes, okay.
So what's the, um, where do we stand in the weather?
So yes, let's start there. Jonathan, uh, if one of our conditions is being provided a. Corrected set of, of schematic plans that show the site plan adjustment. Three feet to the east, moving everything three feet to the east. Um, and corrected architectural schematics. Is that, are you comfortable with that? Or do you want us to pause and have the applicant come back at the next meeting? And I can go either way. I'm fine either way.
I don't know what's to be gained either way. I, I. I think the, the problem is if, if you approve it, which we will do, obviously. Then. What's to make them come back with all that information? They probably won't.
It's not true.
We will have bad feelings with Mr. Scully, who comes regularly before this board. And, and he will lose credibility with us. And so I'd like to think his integrity will compel him to meet that requirement. Anything can be conditioned on building permits. Yeah, that is true. That is true. So they could not. They could not pull a building permit until we had those. Are you, are you okay with that? Okay. Um, so I have been sort of tracking things that we, um. That we've been talking about as potential conditions. Um, and so what I have for discussion as potential conditions. Um, are restricting turning movements out of the driveway in one direction or another. My thought would be right if we wanted to restrict it. Okay, um. Then shifting the site plan three feet to the east to provide for a, um. A, a grassy strip that can accommodate a fence, like a good neighbor style fence. So shift to the east as setback allows and add a fence to demarcate the space between the two driveways. Yes, okay.
Perhaps when you think about the fence, you may reach out to. Neighbor lady.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Construction fence at the drip line of the tree.
Yeah, I have construction, um, fence at the drip, drip line of the, uh, the, um, heritage sugar maple. Julie, heritage sugar maple tree, um, that's on the Mahawi Street side. I don't, I wrote this down just because I, I do agree with Mr. Barganoff on, um, the snow. I mean, I think you're gonna find you're gonna have to load snow out. Operationally. I don't want to make that a condition, but. But that's what people do when they have small spaces, they load the snow out. Um, it's very common. I, I think what the, you know, I can make the condition, but I don't know that it's gonna be easy to enforce that, that. Yeah, that you maintain those twenty-two spaces. You're gonna need every one of them, so.
That, that's a requirement.
Um, and then separately have just recommendation that we communicate with the select board, um, on. Making sure their record includes, um, uh, feedback from the D P W superintendent and fire chief with regard to the. Um, development plan. Okay. So the conditions then are shifting to the east, adding the fence, the corrected set of, um, site plan and architectural plans.
Line corrections is what I have.
As far as the architectural? Yeah.
These are suggestions. I understand. I'll pass them on.
Okay, so tree. Plans, fence, and shifting. Well, that's not a condition. That'll be our communication. We'll communicate that to the select board. Okay. Yes, is there anything that I missed? Is there anything else that we think needs to be added as conditions? Chris, did you have anything else you think we need? Okay. All right, so if that's the case, then, um, I would, I would entertain a motion to, um, accept the site plan. With the four conditions. Kim, do you need me to name those again? Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion, any further discussion? Ted robust. Okay, um, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous then for the four of us who are here who are voting. All right, um, so yeah, if you can get those plans to us, that would be great.
They will continue soon. I might vacation next week, but they will probably come in my asses.
Okay. When are you back before the, um, select board? Do you have a date on that yet? Okay. Third week in July is when you're back before the word. Okay, so, um. I'll work with Kim and we'll get something over to the select board about. Okay.
I think it's already on their, um, on their to-do list for, for fire and.
It, it may well be. I'll just, I'll follow up with, with Mr. Bannon on that. Okay, all right. I appreciate everyone being very civil and, and providing good comments. So thank you all and thank you for participating. All right, uh, we do have additional business, so our meeting continues. You're all welcome to stay. We're gonna talk about ADA plan for the community. Does anyone need a humanity break? Do you need to get up, stand up, use the bathroom? We'll take five minutes then. No, it's not hot and sticky like it was. It's been so gross out. I'm blinking on your name at the moment. Andy, nice to see you again. Thank you for sticking through all of that.
So I guess I just say I did prepare a little bit of a PowerPoint.
Oh, sure.
Highlighted all this.
Okay.
If you still wanted to.
I think it would be. I don't know. I mean, I, I would love to see the ADA plan. Um, yeah, I think we're really interested in it. Yeah.
We talked about, that's why I figured.
I mean, and if you wanna just hit the high points even, you know, entirely up to you, but I think it's important, um. If nothing else, you've helped educate us and I think that's really important in this regard. Um, so we're technically on like five minute hiatus to let people have a, a bio break if they need one and, uh.
Did anybody here know who the old maid's part?
Yes. Yes. You, you need to have, you need to have kids under twelve, I think, to know about that one. Yeah. There's all sorts of funny little parks tucked all over town, like really like, like, oh, you just need like a little hanger and I don't know like what the genesis. Maybe Michelle knows or Kim knows. Some of those like little parks that are like super tiny and there's just like a little sign that just says, and it's like, how did that become a park?
You can let across from, um, State, not State Road, Stafford Road.
The, across from Chico's?
Yeah.
What is that? Where did that come from?
Been there forever, as long as I can remember. Now, now my husband worked when we were talking about, I'm currently reading an email from my sister.
Yeah.
Having street comments, threats going up again.
Oh, I know. I did hear that that was happening. I did. Yeah.
You know.
I do. It's not good. No problem. Um, okay, so we're, we're ready to go again on the meeting. We're starting again at seven fifty-nine. Um. So, Andy, take it away. Go ahead, introduce yourself and give us the, the presentation.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, we've been working, um, in fever, which is a regional planning mission. We've been working for the last, uh, five, six months on ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. Uh, so now we're at the, the end of it. Um, we've got the big draft. I hope you all had a chance to review it. Um, and so I just put together a little short little presentation that kind of goes through some of the, the key bindings and recommendations, so. All right, so just to sort of, I just to quick couple of slides to refresh what it is, the American Disabilities Act is a civil rights, rights law. Um, and that puts the obligation on cities and towns to ensure all that their programming and their facilities are accessible to people with disabilities. Um, the title two of the ADA is the one that's applicable to towns and part of that regulation also includes that towns with fifty more. Uh, fifty employees or more have to have one of these plans and keep it on file. Uh, the self-evaluation portion of the plan is an inventory or inventory of all the areas where. Um, the facilities or the programming is not in compliance with the, um, ADA design standards. Uh, which are the specifics, um, s- specific design standards, um, to ensure that a place is accessible. And the transition plan is the, uh, sort of prioritizing sort of the capital improvements that you would need. Uh, to make, to make sure your facilities are, uh, fully, fully compliant and that the Department of Justice. Uh, recommends that you update these every three years and, uh, you know, continue making progress, so. Next slide, please.
Do they offer funding for that update?
They do. Uh, well, I'm Massachusetts office and disability does. And that's what funded this project, actually, so. Um, so the requirements on that, I think I hit a bunch of these already, um, is they have to have the inventory of all the physical barriers. Uh, look at different solutions, um, uh, anticipated schedule of the improvements. Uh, some steps that towns could make in the interim, um, to make accommodations if that's sort of applicable, if it's a bigger, long-term project. Um, and then it sort of assigns a, uh, municipal entity to, to be in charge of that. Uh, next slide.
And that's not one of our properties, right?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't figure out where that is.
And so just to sort of the, the main portion of this is really looking at the infrastructure in town. So just to remind, we use the. Two thousand and ten ADA design standards and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Boards, uh, five point one C M R, which is the building code. For Massachusetts building code related to accessibility. And then, uh, as we go through these, uh, we go through the priorities that the Department of Justice recommends. Your top priority being the approach and entrance, that's your parking and getting into a building. Um, how do you get into a building, where you get there? Uh, second is the access to goods and services. Um, so if there's a service counter, um, is that accessible for somebody to go up there and be able to get it? Are you asking people to pay their taxes on a second floor with no elevator? That, you know, that won't be accessible. Uh, next one is toilet rooms. Um, that's the next priority. Make sure those are accessible. Um, and then the last priority is sort of, uh, other sort of odds and ends, I guess, but that usually. Um, it relates a lot to water fountains. We see that a lot. And then back when we had a lot more public payphones. Um, that's sort of what.
What's a payphone?
Yeah.
Um. Then maybe that slide answers with, is use the word priorities, but, um, are we required to address. Uh, every deficiency in terms of. It'll be fixed in five years or ten years or two years or do we have to address each one or?
So the, uh, so the requirements would be, so when it comes to the ADA itself, that is, again, that would, somebody would be filing a. Uh, civil rights sort of, uh, claim against the town. Um, and then there could be a requirement that comes out of whatever sort of lawsuit or whatever agreement comes out of that. And Department of Justice will do like a settlement and then they will put in the actual requirements. Uh, but overall, it's a proactive, um, law. So you're proactively obligated to make sure these programs and services are. Accessible. Um, and there is, they, it is, they don't fund you for, uh, your funding programs will help you sort of make those changes. Um, as you go, but as far as the obligation, uh, you do have other options as well. So, um, if. You will have something that is not, um, in a compliant place, you can, you can put in a procedure to. You can, uh, provide an accommodation for somebody that is reasonable for the town and we'll make sure that they can get it. So if there's. Sonnet, uh, you know, town meeting, uh, and somebody can't, um, here, you can make, you could work with them, get an accommodation where you have. You know, hearing devices or you, you get American Sign Language, um, translation on it. So those can address some of those type of things.
So it sounded like, um, uh, we're reading through the thing, it's, it looked like they're actually conducting work in the second floor. Where they have inaccessible space.
So, yep.
Where, but there's no access, uh, accessible way to get there. Cause that's, that, that seems like a pretty serious thing. Um. Is that something that we would be expected then to address right away and, you know, rental space like that? What's the?
Yeah, so that, that, that space gets a little bit, uh, sort of complicated because you guys own it, but it's not really used by. The town, so it's not a town. I guess it wouldn't necessarily your obligation to make that service.
It might be. We would have to work with the.
Right.
With the tenant to see what was needed and build that into any capital plan, lease payment, payments and how to fund it.
Okay, so they have like a first floor, they do have a, a, a first floor courthouse, um, that is, that they do use for that. So if they had a juror who, then they can move their. Their trial or their hearings, they can move it there. They had a defendant or a victim, um, who. They could make that.
Yeah.
So they have access. Uh, so that, that's more of their programmatic thing. But if the use was, but they could, they could say we need, I think your concern there would be if they say, well, we have such volume of. Of, you know, cases going right now that we need more accessible space.
Yeah.
That's where you look at, maybe you do an elevator or you do a first floor, um, expansion or something like that, but. I think when you're dealing with, uh, another agency, that's where things get, um, eh, you know, it'll get complicated because you're. It's their need. So right now they're making the accommodations. So, and. This, as long as they're not having any problems with that, then there isn't really a, a necessity to do anything. But if they do come back and say, we have a necessity for more accessible space, then that's where you look at, maybe do an elevator or something like that. So we, um, this process included, we looked at some of the town policies. Uh, so, um. The requirements in, in the law are that you appoint a responsible person, uh, they usually mostly referred to as an ADA coordinator. To oversee all of the ADA related matters. Um, the town has a D V coordinator, building commissioner. Uh, Matt Colmer, who did review this report as well. Um, he is pointed there, uh, there's grievance policy, uh, that is in place. Uh, and there's a public notice of non-discrimination. Those are the three key requirements, um. The town requires mall. But some of the best practices and recommendations though is the town doesn't have a townwide ADA policy. Um, so that would address things like accommodation procedures for, you know, a department head. So. Everybody knows that if they get a call, they know what to do. Say there's a transportation issue, like you have a down rating. Uh, if you're a department head and you have somebody who has a transportation issue, like, okay, we're gonna call the B R T A or we're gonna call this person and we're gonna arrange. And I have to do it within X number of days before, uh, if you need a translation service, okay, we're gonna, this is who we're gonna call, we're gonna call the, you know, commission. Uh, and then also just outlining that there is no fees for accommodation, uh, can't charge fees for combination. So some type of overall procedure, just so all staff is aware, uh, if they do encounter this, that they're not there to figure it all out on their own. There is an established process to go through it. Um, a commission on disabilities, I would highly recommend reforming a commission on disabilities. They're empowered by the law. To basically do the, take not only this transition plan and really sort of be the sort of. Force behind advocating for it, identifying funding, sort of working with Massachusetts office on disability, on, on taking these. But they also provide significant insight on sort of things that the ADA doesn't address. The ADA is very much a sort of baseline. Uh, understanding of how you make an accessible, uh, community, uh, but they can provide a lot of, uh. Insight on whether if you want to do, um, you know, different type of playgrounds or if you want to get different type of equipment. They're really the ones who help facilitate those discussions.
Is that a commission that, that always typically have some disabled people in there?
Yes. Yes, typically that would be the ideal. So. A snow removal policy and program, I suggest this, this is also, this is actually direct from M O D, where, you know, municipalities can delegate to their community to remove the snow in front of their property to make sure that there is accessible route to, say, town hall. If somebody needs to, to go to town hall, that the sidewalks are clear. One of the programs they suggest is in the town of Somerville, they did this partnership with their schools and in the community where they were able to get sort of younger students and they paired them up with homeowners who have disabilities and don't have the ability to clear their own sidewalk. And so that kind of helps make your snow removal sort of better. And then I also like to add in there, provide staff training opportunities that M O D provides a lot of free and so does the New England ADA Center. It's a lot of free opportunities, a lot of unique ones. So just keep an eye on what those opportunities are and if they're applicable, take a look. So we can go through these pretty quick. So town hall, these are just some of the key findings I found in each, in some of these properties. So mostly you gotta do some repairs to the parking lot and the site work to try to make it a smoother walk-in. Make sure the signs are delineated. Inside, you can use some work on signs to permanent spaces. Make sure they're in a predictable space. Make sure there's enough room on the, on the, you know, side of a doorway or something for someone to read them. There's some counter spaces. I think the tax collector's office might be a good project to try to take on pretty soon to make sure that there's enough legroom and approach to it. And then there's some minor bathroom upgrades that are noted in the report, so. Police department, not really a ton here. There was a couple, you know, furnitures blocking some space near doorways that kind of made it a little difficult. There's some railing, railing extensions. Signage is something that you'll see, you know, you need.
Is that a scene?
Yeah. The service counter is, is could use some work. And then van accessible parking with the, with the codes. If you have one, you need to have at least one accessible spot and it needs to be van accessible. So a lot of these, they have the painted, I'll just say add van accessible, but it's already got the painted aisle that you need for it to be. It's, it's wide enough. It just doesn't have a sign. So some of that, some you need to paint the, paint an aisle or widen or spot. So, but that's detailed in here, so.
Excuse me, what does M O D state?
Massachusetts office. So Mason Library, I think it would be nice, it would be nice to connect your existing parking to the front entrance of there. And then the door thresholds, the, you know, entry door thresholds, I think both of those were getting kind of worn out and they're kind of, they're creating an uneven way to get in. So those are two, two particular projects that you can do. Signage again, and then the bathroom doors were at excessive weight. So you can adjust, adjust the closers and be able to lighten that up so it'll open it.
So Andy, to go from the parking to the front door, you cannot use the sidewalk because that's actually leaving the property. Do I have that correct?
Oh, yeah. I mean, what I would suggest is trying to find a, a way to connect.
On the property.
Onto it, yeah. I mean, you could still, you could do, we, we, we did talk about maybe if you did accessible parking on street right up front and then cut, you know, just put a curb cut.
It'd be cheaper than.
Right, then you already can do another bath, you know, so.
I have a question. Create accessible connection to the new entrance at Mason. How would that happen? Or what would it look like?
That's, they were just, they were just discussing, trying to figure out how to actually make that work. Yeah.
Yeah, you could move the, you know, yeah, you could move the parking spot sort of, you know, back a little bit and then do sort of a path up to it, three foot wide, kind of firm path that's sort of connected with it. Or you could do an accessible spot right up front and do a new curb cut and then just approach.
If you think about how the accessible spot is in front of Barrington Outfitters, you know, where they've sort of worked to have a big space and then there's a slope directly from that parking space that takes you up to the sidewalk level. So something like that, but it would have to be like redone. Yeah.
Senior Center, again, a lot of just, you know, minor things, signage, some minor restroom improvements that are sort of more detailed in here. You had a bunch, you had items that we found that were sort of outside of reach ranges, so just need to be lowered. And then they have a stove, which the only issue with that is that the controls to turn it on are in the back. And so you gotta have them in the front. That's the difference because you don't want anybody trying to.
Reach over and turn that. Turn it off. See, you have signage in most of these. What's the issue with signage that there is none?
Yeah, it's either that there is none or it's, you know, I think with the police department, they have signage, but it's not a high contrast signage. So, and then some of them, they're in the wrong space, a lot of bathrooms. So the, the signs should be on the, on the lash side of the door. And it should be, you know, eighteen inches of space for somebody to kind of come up and, and read them without getting hit by the door. And so it's, and it's gotta be tactile, so we can read it with.
Braille.
You know, braille.
Okay.
So you want those in all your permanent spaces where people are going. So a lot of it. So we talked about the court. Consider adding that to increase accessibility if you need more accessible space. And, you know, I think we addressed that a little bit is, you know, they're, they're making do with it. So if that's, but if you need more accessible space and you need to make those other spaces, that would be what we would say. So, community center thresholds, signage again. There's an old stage area you need to kind of widen to be able to get back there. And there's some restroom improvements. I will say there's one spot, who's the tonic? I think it's the kitchen area, where it's basically, it goes straight downstairs. I, I don't think there's a solution to sort of make that accessible. So I think that, I think in here, it's like make sure there's an accommodation for you. If somebody can't get in there, like you'll have to just find a different accommodation, so. Ramsdale, I believe there's a, a project in the works. There's not much accessible about this building. So I just, so recommendations sort of proceed with the sort of renovation. But yeah, there's a parking, you have on-street parking, there's no on, on, parking on the property, but on-street parking, it's kind of steep, the curb cuts a little. It's, it's not the greatest. And then the restrooms in there are just not, they're not accessible in any sort of way. And then moving among the bookshelves is, is difficult. And then your upper floor is just not accessible at all. So that's a property that you could try to do a lot of little things, but it just makes sense to, especially with the renovation projects in the work, see where that goes first. So.
Great.
I think he won't make it, won't make it accessible.
So fire stations, garage, highway cemetery garage and the transfer station, we did look at them. These are all sort of lower in the priority chain, mainly because with the, a lot of these properties are, with like the fire stations and highway garage, those are employees and one provision in, you know, with the ADA is that if it's, you know, a central job function. So these are, you know, this is our labor job. So you don't have the public going in there very often and you're not gonna run into too many employment issue on those. But I will note that the fire station where we held one of the public meetings on this, that public space is very accessible and very usable. So that's, that's really good. Bathrooms are really great, so. And then the rest of the space is just open, so that's, that's pretty accessible as well. Who's a tonic fire station, the garages, the public aren't using those, so there's no point in make that a property. And then the transfer station is, it's in, it's, for what it is, it's, it's accessible. But then there's also staff when it's open, unavailable, who can, who can provide that accommodation. So I wouldn't really put any, wouldn't stress too, too much about that, so.
And you have to pay for access.
Did you look at voting locations also, the Houston Community Center and the fire station, and those were?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, because those are open spaces. So, yeah, the community center, they use the gym, right? So, yeah, that's, that's part of this. So parks, recreational areas, now there's a lot of them. So I put them into just a couple, I put all of them into a couple of slides. Because it would take, it would take a while. So common barriers we see is accessible parking. You know, a lot of parks just don't have parking. Accessible routes, that's the most common thing you're gonna see throughout. There is not a whole lot of adaptive equipment and there's no accessible seating. There's a lot of, there's not really a lot of accessible seating. And you see pickling from trash cans that are located off any pathway kind of things. You could move those closer, so. So recommendations on this overall parks is, you know, you are undertaking an open space and recreation plan. So when it comes to the ADA, since the parks, you have a vast park system, you really only, the requirement is, you know, as of of a whole. So you don't need every park to be accessible. Given that you're going through an OSRP to really determine where your priorities are gonna fly, this should just be a consideration into when you start prioritizing where you're gonna make those investments. That's, then you should use that with accommodation and with, with ADA in mind. Add parking where you can, restrooms, that's what we hear from a lot of people in the community, it's important, accessible paths. I also had in there seek opportunities for creative boundless playground. What we've heard about playgrounds in every community I've worked in is that the, the woodchip surface is just not accessible. So the, it doesn't, it complies with the ADA, the ADA just refers to the safety standards. But we've heard it's not accessible. So if you're gonna identify a place to do a playground with that nice rubber surface, that would be, and then you'd be able to market that and share that with people.
Boundless is a rubber surface.
Oh, boundless is just sort of a, a general term for like an inclusive.
Universal accessibility.
Yeah, universal.
Fence with a boundary.
Yeah. No, you should buy a fence too, like your fence harnesses on your equipment and that type of thing, so. And then add just accessible elements to the park system, so. I think there's only a couple more. So we did look at some of the sidewalks. This is more of an inventory of just the conditions. Recommendations is basically follow the public right of way. Accessibility guidelines and then look to add audible and vibro tactile crossing signals. You have a handful of those right here in downtown and those are great. There's not as many down at the Sonic. So just look for opportunities to sort of add those. And then always keeping a lookout on those detectable warning surface mats. Those do wear out. And so this report did sort of look at and note where some of them may have been worn and should be replaced in those soon. So they don't become, you know, a significant hazard, so. We also looked at your web communications. So these are the website we looked at, the town's website, this is the old time website though, the police department, the libraries, the senior center, so. A lot of things we've, the, the common barriers is there's an issue with color contrast in places. There's no alternative text. So if you have a photo, we should, it should have an alternative text that says what it is. So a screen reader, read it. Lack of clarity in link descriptions. And that's more just explaining, like click here, so to read this, instead of click here, you know, so just something more. And then a lot of PDFs, particularly older ones, are not sort of accessible for screen readers. So our recommendations here is to work with the vendors that are maintaining the website. Make sure that they're aware of, you know, the web content accessibility guidelines and they're complying with it. And then you should look at staff who are making content for the webpage and make sure that they're aware of, of the sort of requirements on there so that they are putting documents up that are accessible, so.
Get into video at all, like descriptive video services or?
So with the, with the requirements for web content accessibility guidelines, so there like video, there are different levels of it. So with the requirement that is going into place, which I hope I talked to this board about, but in, in, so the, the federal government did adopt a rule to accepting web content accessibility guidelines. And so that will be law and is by twenty twenty seven, I think, is when it's applicable for Great Barrington. And one of the levels is if you do a pre-recorded video service, you have to use subtitles. So there are some, there are guidelines in there for videos. That was just an example of, so what you, you know, where you would fall on the level, so.
Thank you, Andy. Just curious, did the select board get the same presentation?
I.
Okay.
So.
At minimum, I'd like to make the presentation available to them as a, as a hard copy that they can look through. Because I think a lot of what is in this is something that they would need to provide guidance through Chris for direction to the different town departments to think about which elements are kind of low-hanging fruit that we can take care of in house ourselves and then, you know, keep it in mind as we're doing renovation projects, moving on in, in different buildings or making upgrades to park facilities or whatever. You probably also want to share it with the Parks Committee, right? That'd probably be good for that group to have. Anybody else we think we should share with?
Thank you, everybody.
Well, I mean, there's no limit, but I was just thinking specifically people that have, yeah. So if you can make those slides available, that'd be great, yeah. Um, yeah, Jafina.
It might just be worth a specific, like, like thinking about other committees, like even like the childcare committee, which I think would be really interested in, like Kate Benals has been involved professionally with adjustment disabilities. And I feel like they would be very interested in thinking about them and some children. So, yeah, I can see many people in the community that they're seeking a relevant to it. It might be worth thinking.
It's a good point. I'm assuming this will be placed on our town whip event, right? Yeah, our website.
It might not know, right?
Yeah, 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 okay. Maybe we do a little pressing. Did you have a comment, Claudia?
It's transition plan, just about town-owned buildings.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's not about public perceptible moments.
No.
It was, it was just town-owned.
Just town-owned.
Yeah.
Can I just say thank you so much, the fact that you did this? And you went through it multiple times and it's just really valuable and timely, but I know how it'll get out of date. I don't have the best practices elsewhere, but it's, I mean, I think it's, thank you very much.
What, what should we do with it? What's the next step with it?
I think we refer it to the places where it can be implemented, right? Because we want it to be implemented as much as possible.
I mean, it still doesn't seem to be priorities here. I mean, I mean, there are mixed in here, but somebody needs to sit down with each one of these. Actually, I didn't say which ones are really first.
Like, I love matrices, right? And so like, that's how we've done.
Who would do that? Who would do that?
There's some thoughts, you know, in addition to the, these good thoughts about, I mean, make sure the select board sees it, Parks Commission sees it specifically, but also sending it specifically to all boards and all department events. Posting it on the website and making sure everybody knows about it. And of course, a, a PR effort, we can put it on our website. People should know we have it and, and as the select board, I think will be the driving force in terms of maybe integrates it into its strategic planning. And it says to the department heads, make sure this is in your operating budget, so your capital budgets. And it will really be up to the, I think ultimately, the department heads and the town manager to see what can be done, where. Taking input from the public, from the boards, Parks Commission, from the open space plan to say, okay, out of all the parks, we want to focus on this park. Out of all the buildings, we want to focus. So that's gonna be an interactive effort, I think, and it's, you know, going to have to be.
I'm sorry, I forgot we were gonna have a town manager. It's not you. I'm sorry, I forgot we were gonna have a town manager, it's not you. No, I think that's. No, but I mean, on that, that sarcastic, but nevertheless, I mean, that's the person.
You as a board or the select board could, you know, any of these plans that you do, this plan, the open space plan, the master plan, you can revisit it every year. Maybe that's something you wanna do, put on your schedule for this meeting every June. See where it is, you know.
That would be worthwhile.
Do a regular check in.
So, for example, with Ramsdale, is this automatically going to them, or do we just say, hey, check this out, and this is priorities, or?
As I said, we'll, we'll send it to all the department heads and boards.
I was just thinking that, there's a, okay. The library department.
But to Andy's point in the presentation, Ramsdale is undergoing some renovations.
I really mean Ramsdale, I'm thinking more Mason.
Yeah, 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 so, but, um, building code also requires when you make. Upgrades to buildings that you.
Compliant with the old laws of, it was too steep of a ramp, it was okay when it was built. I hope it was okay.
Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice job, Andy, thank you.
Should we give him a round of applause?
And Dave as well, yeah. It's a pleasure, pleasure. Very timely for the open space plan.
Very timely for the open space plan. All right, Mr. Rumpel.
Um, I'm not sure how much energy people have, I don't think that's really.
Have a chocolate covered nut.
There's, there's more, anybody?
The, what I was hoping is the planning board could discuss, and we said select, the planning board could discuss, um, tonight, are your thoughts about. Framing the community engagement piece, um, I know that Giovanina has, has been, you know, we've been thinking about this. Quite a bit in terms of, started with like Mansfield and liaison work. And we're building on what we've learned. There, as well as what we learned in the previous open space recreation plan efforts, so there are old surveys that we can do. We have some good ideas about who, um, other open space recreation partners are in towns, nonprofits who do this stuff. What we've developed over the recent years is more about who should be at the table, helping us make decisions. You know, setting agendas and things like that, so while we, while the scope of this project includes. Six meetings with this committee and a public survey and two public meetings. This planning board can do much more based on what we've learned through our other, through our other work. We've also so far invited some boards and commissions to specifically be present with us. Um, and to make sure that we have, um, their, um, vision and needs and input in mind, so. To that, and Parks and Recreation, uh, has already, um, discussed having two of their members be active liaisons. Coming to us on the fourth meeting of every month and reporting back and, and communicating between boards. It'd be great to do that with other boards, and I'd like you to think about who that should be, I think Conservation Commission would be one, that's natural. And maybe there are others too, council and aging, maybe there are others, so it'd be great to think about that, um. What else?
Jevina and I have been chatting about this subject because we were both on the committee. The last committee.
Twenty thirteen?
No.
Twenty nineteen. And it was paused by COVID.
The start, but not.
Oh, that's why it's so, survey is so old.
Yeah, yeah. Not old, it's just, it was slumbering. So COVID changed all of the responses.
This is a, this is a good, um, night and over the next few weeks to, to think about how to approach this. BRPC staff will be with us at the July meeting, the fourth July meeting for like an official kickoff with them as our consultants. But it's really up to us to make this a. A community wide plan.
I was really interested in just what's the difference between this year and twenty thirteen? You know, and you were, what were you looking at in twenty twenty, and when, because I'm, you could do the full bore.
Well, remember, last year when this planning board was talking about the master plan updates, I provided the planning board some updates about population, housing. Open space added or changed, so you, you've got some of that information, so just the, the number of parks and open spaces. Uh, that the town has, has increased, um, the number of trails, et cetera, have increased. The thinking of the town, um, relative to climate change and climate resiliency has changed. This is all since twenty thirteen and even twenty nineteen, an active tree committee. Um, a, a growing better Great Barrington agricultural plan, all of these things have happened since then that we can now incorporate into our thinking. And there may be other things.
So just briefly, cuz you've already mentioned a couple of things that we have been discussing. Giovanina and I are, I think it, our conversation's been really productive because we both have sort of. Did a little bit of different, I don't wanna call them agendas, but a different ideas to what's. To what we're about to embark on, um, for my, I'll give you just from my perspective, and I'll briefly, um, introduce. Where I think is very important to you, um, as we think through this process, um. It seems to me like it's an opportunity for us to really, uh, think deeply about what the, what OSR. Means, open space and rec, right? Are they two separate things, are they one thing? The reason I bring this up in that way is because for me, the recreation component. Is kind of obvious, like parks and trails and the rest of it that we have. But the open space part of it is more, in my mind, uh, cultural. Sort of artifact that we all share, it's the type of thing that attracted us to this area.
Like farmland, you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, it, it, just where, farmland's part of it, agriculture's part of it. Um, lands that are conserved, but, uh. The bigger cultural piece, when I say cultural, it's the idea, it's the thought that we step out and we are in this. Natural sort of world. And the things that we're surrounded by, the, our effects with, you know, the weather, the rivers, the lakes. The woods, all of that stuff makes up. What we, sure, the ticks too, you know, they make up what, what we as a sort of culture enjoy about, about this area. And so that, you know, it plays itself out in, in conservation efforts and agricultural efforts and the rest of it. But, you know, I think that's, that should be a big part of how we, it should be in the back of our minds all the time, I think. Instead of just thinking about this as a recreation point, and where we can ride our bikes and where we can walk and the rest of it, it's really. You know, it's, it's embedded in our vision and our ideas, I know, you know, Michelle talks often about. About this place and what it is, and I, I hear many people talking about, you know, the open space in the place and the trees and the rest of it, and that's what I'm kind of. Kind of getting at.
You know, one of the things that attracted us to Great Barrington is that there are more acres of preserve than there are people.
Right. You know, I think that's a really, it's really important, you know, I think, and, and as a board, you know, we've been trying to. Uh, focus development in these already built areas to try to preserve those things so that when we. Drive, you know, two minutes outside of Route Seven, we are in a more or less natural environment. Um, you know, a couple of other questions that we have come up that I think are important to, to think about. Is obviously we'll be thinking about and defining what our role is, and I think, Chris, you've already touched upon this, but this goes to. Uh, a point that's really important to Giovanina, and as I said before, or in the previous, uh, iteration of this effort. We were a committee of people, and, you know, for a, a very important aspect of the committee. That Giovanina points out is that it involved a lot of people, and it. Through efforts that we all did, really, you know, some of us more than others, we were able to gather a lot of. A lot of different voices and a lot of different, you know, people to come in and, and discuss this thing. I think we're all pretty proud of, of having, you know, three hundred and fifty or so residents fill out our. Survey and that sort of thing, so the point is that if it stays within, you know, this. Board and this table, it's probably not gonna be as robust as it was when we had our, the, the committee at large. So we have to, in a way, steward that engagement, right?
How different is it from the twenty thirteen master plan elaborate outreach to everybody, is that a model or not? With all these community meetings, you have thirty committees and then you have these. Individual meetings around eleven different sites, is that being considered or not, or? Going back to us, but, I mean, I'm, because I'm interested, because I'm, I, I read the, the old. O- OSRD report and I was looking at the structure and how it's outlined in the beginning. And it's done at the same time as the master plan, and indeed, a summary appears in the master plan. I mean, there's an integrated effort here, and I'm just wondering. I'm thinking about resources and time, because we're already late with the master plan. Pushed off and resources are tight and how these two work together or don't. The master plan and OSRP or? Yes, I'm thinking, because it's a similar process of outreach, and you can get confused, but you could also be. Tiring people of getting together in a short period of time to address all these really important issues. Or it could play off of each other well, and it could be big picture and we're gonna, which one do you wanna engage with? Which set of ideals do you want, or, so, I mean, that's where my head went, because. I was kept trying to find the two thousand, two thousand seven version of the OSRT, and I couldn't find it, and then I wanted to. Find the history, which we don't have to worry about, the history has changed, but maybe has interpretation.
I, I, I liked the neighborhood approach of the master plan. There were enough people on that committee, there are neighborhood captains.
They, they were well selected.
Not just captain naturally, but. You could do that. That was a geographic representation of town, there may be different ways to think about neighborhoods or communities that you wanna reach out to, so don't. Necessarily stick with, you know, we go from this road to this road, there may be other ways and themes. To consider. There, there's the chance of needing fatigue, fatigue of too many meetings. Not that I've ever experienced that myself. Are they even a quarter of nine? And I wonder if. But if, if it's a, if it's a good experience and, and hopefully the. The community, the board and the volunteers. Put thought into it, I think it's a way just to lead into and. And build that excitement for a larger basis.
Or are the communities here, are they people communities, or are they like bicycling, hiking, coding, close country soon?
We approached people where they work. And that's what was really.
But I mean, this survey, you're, you're, I mean, this, this is great, I mean, here, here are the activities that people enjoy doing in a town. So we're coming up with an open space and recreation plan, why not make sure that we have representatives of all of these?
That was one, one of my point, my, my, my next point. That was gonna make exactly that, is that, you know, we, we were thinking that we, we should have basically two types of people, one. The types of people that are, uh, related to and associated with places where human beings don't live and were. And, and the opposite, somebody who's representative of places where human beings live, so in other words, people who are. Involved in conservation and the rest of it, and people who are more active in the parks and, and that sort of thing, those are, just to name a couple. Right, but I think we could have a, a larger, um, sort of pool of people that, that are more representative. But, you know, I think it's important to, to remember that all the people that, that came onto the survey were a variety of publics, right? And we, and they, some of them showed up to, to meetings, but then others we reached out to and to where they were. Right, so these are kind, you know, things that were successful for us. The final point I've gotta make, and then I'll turn it over to you if you have anything else to say, is we thought. It, it important way as we get started on this, uh, on this process, to recognize any. History that we've already covered, so the previous efforts that we've made have given you the, the surveys. Chris may mention the. The GBGB, the Growing Better Great Barrington Plan, I think we should, it's an agricultural plan, it's really. Jevina, give me a copy over there, and it's really, uh, really great, we have a pollinator action plan. There's tons of work that the parks has done that maybe we need to refresh ourselves or get acquainted with before we start. And then, of course, there's the, the previous efforts that have been put into creating these plans. So the twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen efforts, so with that, if you have anything else to add?
Um, a, a couple of things, one is. When we, when we paused, it was like such an exciting moment, and so. I was very attached to this work, um. Like we had, we had put together a survey and we thought about. The OSRP as, and I say we, and the, the committee wasn't that large, it wasn't like a lot of people. That the committee was, it was like six people, I think, like ConCon and. Parks and planning board, sustainability committee, and then a citizen at large, I think. And maybe, I don't know, maybe somebody else, and, um. There was this idea about the, that the OSRP could be, um, not just kind of like. Surveying people who, um, are accessible. Through normal survey meetings, right, because like people who have computers or don't have computers, right? People who speak English or don't speak English, and not just, you know, people who are, you know, people in the high school who are never gonna have. They're never gonna take survey online, even if it comes into their email inbox, right, and so like, um, you know, there's something about. Yes, so OSRP that cuts across every single demographic of people who live in town, and so there is a way to be like. You know, um, are we, are we surveying to learn, like. Not to throw you under the bus, but you did say something many years ago, which really stuck in my mind, which is, you said something about like. I think we know how people use the whatever, was that the end of the thing? And, um, and it was like such a learning moment, because the answer is you might think that you know how people use, because that's how you use it, your family uses it. Or all the people that you know use it, but that, you know, implies like proximity and that you know, and that you are proximal to like. Everyone who lives, you know, and experiences living in Great Barrington, and so. I think that, that we were really thinking then with some of the best, like, what is diverse. Like truly diverse and inclusive, um, you know, conversations around something that we all utilize. Whether it's just, whether it's like looking at the beautiful mountain that nobody walks on, or like bringing your kids to the park. And it was, um, you know, it was just, it was COVID, and it was halted just as like this was, and it was pretty. Cool, like there was a lot of energy behind it, there were young people, you know, and we were going out and, and so, and so I've had attachment to. Coming back to that kind of process, because we had conversations with people like at. The Winter Farmers Market, that if you don't go to where people are, they're never gonna talk to you, they're not gonna show up to this meeting. And they're not gonna reply to a survey for whatever reason, and those conversations were very rich and generative, so, um.
Yeah, but I think it goes, it just goes to the point about how. How engaged people were.
Totally.
Because as you say, it touches everybody who lives here.
So it sounds like we should.
Let me say, why I'm interested in how you set those up, to have these conversations. Well, well, so, best practices around engagement. Best, oh, we had a table and we were like, we had a sign that says, that said something like, come talk to us about where you go inside, literally. But best practices around engagement are to go where people are, not to ask them to come to you. And that's particularly important now that safety is an issue for many members of our community, um, and so actually, I think that. Like, safety in conversations is, um, you know, do we wanna talk to people who will feel unsafe being out in public, yes. And so those are real considerations, you know, but. But the one thing I wanted to say is that I, I think that there definitely are things that we did that were great, but five years have passed. And there are different considerations now, like what are best, but you know. And there are different considerations now, like what are best, but you, you all can find out or I can find or whatever. What are best practices around inclusive engagement? You know, people have written a lot about this. It's not, you don't have to make it up, you know? So, and, and people in our community, I think would be really excited and actually like, um, to see the town engaging in a process that is very honoring of like C D O, um, community based organizations constituents. Right? That's an act of trust and relationship building that can be really, really important. So I think that, I mean, I think that the O S R P and the, and the master plan can be tools, not just of like unlocking funds for investment in open spaces, but yeah, tools for exactly.
You know, we, we discussed too that it, it could be an opportunity for this board to become more active in, at large throughout the town. Not true, you've been talking about doing.
But maybe somebody wants to ask you about a bylaw and then how wonderful that you get to explain that.
So just in terms of what you wanted to achieve
Oh, go.
Today, yes. Well, considering we're three hours in now. Um, and I, I feel like at three hours, we all start to fall apart. So, and we do have just one small thing, but do you want us to move to create some outline? I mean, Pedro, it sounds like you and Jovanina have some notes and, and probably already a framework for engagement. And I, it sounds like. It sounds like we, we do want robust engagement and I love the advice that we go where people are. But I think we do need a broader cross section of people to help with this. Do we want to solicit some additional people to engage, starting maybe first with some of the other town boards and committees?
Be good to know what boards and committees you'd, you'd like here with you at the table, because then being at the table is for what other communities or community organizations um, should be involved in the decision. Might be geographic communities and might be communities of affinity or types of activities. It might be communities of different ages or abilities or languages. Think about groups and those ways as well. Um, and maybe your homework is to send me your thoughts and I can try to compile them the next time we meet.
Can I, actually, I love the idea of sending someone thoughts and compiling them, but your plate is very full. And I'm wondering if Jackie might be willing to be the recipient of the thoughts on who else should be on the committee? And would you be willing to do that? Cause I know you've been thinking of it in, in terms of like the master plan too, and this seems somewhat aligned there. But if, if we as our homework could send Jackie our thoughts on who, um, what are the boards and committees, um, what non-governmental stakeholders? Um, and, um.
Other community groups or action groups or.
Yeah, I, I, that's, I'm calling those the non-government, so people outside of the like. Sure, whatever makes you happy is fine with me. Yep, yeah, I was thinking of it in terms of NGOs, um, department heads. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thought as well.
Things like biking clubs and hiking clubs.
I mean, it could get really expansive. And so my fear is that it gets too expensive. But, but yeah, I think right now it's just brainstorm, right? Just, this is just a brainstorm. So, um, can we do that ahead of our meeting on the twelfth? Is it the twelfth?
The next, the second meeting.
The second meeting of.
Do we want to wait that long to have this on the?
Go ahead and do your homework early.
Do the homework early and let's check in. Let's check in, let's do, let's not wait. It's the tenth is our next meeting, so.
Shame, shame.
Put that on the agenda.
Yes, sorry. Just one, um, you know, when, when, um, you're thinking broadly about who to include, um, think about people that have never and will never be at a planning board meeting ever.
That's almost everyone in the whole town.
I mean, I, I'm going to make a pitch to Jackie about, um, the skate park coordinator from Rowick Street, Devon. Um, you know, because like who is looking at that open space and who is at that open space, right? That's like such a great, you know, and, and unlikely that any of us are, are hanging skate park. I mean, maybe, maybe I'm.
I think, you know, like as Pedro was talking about, like open space versus like active recreation space. I see it as like a continuum, right? And, and I think our use of those spaces is a continuum also. So I've raised two kids here. We started at the tot lot. We've been to Giggle Park. We've been to Olympia Meadows. We've been to the skate park many, many times. Now not the skate park, but the basketball courts there. We played baseball in the baseball. So like you get moved through, you know, all those things, but there are, to your point, a lot of people that have never been to Olympia Meadows. Like if you've not been down there.
You've also raised monarchs.
Yes.
See, that's the point, right?
Yeah.
Like that's what we do here.
Right monarchs?
That's related to open space.
Yeah.
We've got them. We don't need another one.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. Let's stay focused. Okay. So our homework on this task is just brainstorm and send Jackie our brain dump.
So one, one, one thing I'd like to ask that I think there's a really important uh, element in our community that's not addressed by this, which is our streets, our roads, you know, where people walk and they ride their bikes and everything and, and that's going to be part of this.
That's a good point. Yeah.
And we talked about, I think that like when you all, you know, and maybe I'll be part of it in some way as a my attachment. But when you, um, when you all have conversations, streets really comes to the fore as one of the central places that people use to walk and be outside.
And they know it.
Yeah, it, it really does rise to the center of the conversation.
Thank you. Trees.
I, I think Julie to come up with. Uh, I'm here, um, as a representative of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Oh, great.
But I'd also like tree committee to be represented in this group as well.
Yeah.
I think probably what we need clarification on is whether O S R P is actually funded, is a grant or is this, uh, do you anticipate some kind of funding for this master plan or is it just right now?
Yeah.
Because like, for instance, parks already has a few, well, we've been through some kind of planning for Dewey Park. And we've identified other areas that would really benefit from the, if there is a, a funding for an open space operation plan.
Yeah.
Um, and tree committee is like very much about like just that cultural element where, you know, inviting spaces, which means trees and just accessible areas that make people want to gather. Um, and there's, it's not just trees either. There are some spaces where people in the community have just taken it upon themselves to improve like grass medians on, on the sidewalks. All of that feels very vigilant and not everyone is very confident about just owning space here and owning the public space. I feel it's very important that we all feel empowered to come and ask for permission without like, or just like be given permission, say, you know, we're setting aside these places to plant a tree. You know, we want more, um, support for tree planting with everything we do go out there. You know, so many people stop us when we, when we plant and they're very excited. But we feel like there's, on the other side, we feel like there's a lot of resistance of, um, and parks, we, we've talked about a lot of different areas that could really use improvement. Giggle Park, I think I joined Parks and Recreation Commission just because I, I think Giggle Park needs, um, attention. Um, but again, there are so many spaces that could really be inviting. We put up, um, you don't like that fencing. I know that they, they split rail fencing along Stanley Park. I don't like how it came out either, but I have to say that just creating these kind of, uh, so like circumscribed areas. Um, I've seen people actually in that space and hanging their, their jackets over the rail and just, you know, once you delineate a space, make it comfortable and accessible, shaded. You know, people will come and it's just another, it's just another place for, um, you know, to invite community feeling, especially a feeling of ownership.
Well, yeah.
Um, so.
No, I, I, I think there's totally a place for tree and tree activity and tree committee and tree recommendations in open space and recreation, definitely.
What was the question about funding? I didn't quite understand.
I, I'm just wondering what the, um, oh, the O S R P actually, is it, is it like, um, a plan? Or is it, um, a grant, a grant seeking, um, initiative?
I think both. We have to do it to unlock certain types of funding, but it can in addition help. We, we have been talking last year about doing the master plan update. And we've sort of taken a half a step back. We thought we'll do the open space and recreation plan. That can sort of be then leveraged into a master plan discussion when we've got more in people and, and monetary capacity to take that task on because it's a bigger.
Unlock grants for recreational space, skate parks, whatever, or open space acquisitions.
I think this is like a factor, this idea to just prove, you know, just that different, the various committees and commissions. Because, you know, there's so much work that has already fallen on. We weren't just waiting for an opportunity to implement it, but you know.
Yeah, totally. Yeah.
And also to have people know, to have people know about it. I mean, one of the things that you've expressed as an issue and we've talked about is that in my community liaison role is that committees don't know what each other are doing. And so this has the possibility of bridging those conversations and creating connections and possibilities.
Even event planning in, in like, in some of these spaces. We were just talking about, uh, a movie, outdoor movie screening on Memorial Field because we feel that that's an underused space. It's used by baseball, but then it's really the central gap.
If you can keep the mosquitoes away, I think it's a brilliant idea.
Yeah, but you know, still people work together. That's the more sensual open space of the town. It's not Giggle Park. And, uh, the more we open up these spaces, you know, with events or with trees or with like opportunities to garden.
See, this is the point. It's like public space. We were talking about, this is part of the culture.
Not cluttering.
And we don't have enough of it. Yeah. So we can think about this stuff, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just trying to, come on people.
Chris, you, you mentioned earlier that, um, B R P C is, and you participate in this?
The, the process itself is, um, is funded by a grant. The first regional bank commission staff time is funded actually by two grants.
Thanks, Michelle.
District local technical assistance and the state open space planning grant.
Okay.
So it's like thirty or forty grand.
So, so we do have some money and we had some professional help.
Right. So the process is supported with grants, the professional help, uh, during the process.
Yeah.
Um, you all will buttress that substantially, at least I hope you do by the thinking that you're doing. And then it is required to be, to be in place to, you know, if you're going to apply for a big grant from the state for X, Y, or Z, you need to have discussed it in this planning process.
To clarify, Chris, so is it our intent to use B R P services to really have that help us with some of the technical things? Some of the mapping and figures and tech, you know, text, so we need them to like do the machination part, right? We, we. Right, right. Yeah, like you don't want to be typing up the report, you know, in the wee hours, so.
Thanks, one clarifying question. I'm so sorry. Um, Chris, is there any money? So is all of the money going, the state going to B R P C or is some of that? Do you have some discretionary funds that you can use for the project?
There may be funds in the planning, uh, department and the planning board or other budgets.
But not from the grant or.
You know, the grant goes directly to pay B R P C staff directly. But if there's extra work at the town that you all decide is needed, um, we could try to fund it with a reminder that F Y twenty six budgets are very, very tight.
But you could still ask them to do lots of things like, you know, have a, um, see if within the funding there is simultaneous translation that can happen at a meeting that they're, that they're funding.
Uh, I, um, I, I think we want to make a point to reach out in a multilingual way. And so I, I agree with you. We want to find some funds for that and prioritize. So I don't know, I'm not sure how that'll happen yet, but, but.
Needs right now.
Right, yeah, but, yeah, exactly. I, but the thinking is right in terms of reaching all the people in our community.
It should be eligible for CPA funds. It's touching.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's. Some communities are interpreted that way. If you asked me, it would be, it's, it's a touchy.
I'm not asking you.
The CPA is very, very specific about what it can be.
Okay.
The project, the resulting, you know, this is what we want to do. Those could definitely, maybe not in the planning process.
What about the community?
All right. So we've got homework. We're going to do it. We're sent to Jackie. Thank you, Jackie. Um, and we'll move on to town planner's report. We have a meeting on the twelfth. No, we have a meeting on the tenth, not the twelfth. Yeah, because that's Saturday unless you want to come in on Saturday. Wait, hold on. Let me make sure. I'm not looking at June. At July, July, yeah, it's July tenth, seven, ten.
Seven, ten. So you wanted to learn more about battery energy storage systems.
I have some materials from the state of New York's, um.
Yeah, let's comprehend that.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm going to send you the New York materials as well because I think they're better than the mass materials.
Great. Um, you will also have a site plan review for a proposed, um,
Grandma.
Grand Mount Silver Eisner Camp. I'll try to set up a site visit for that for you for that day at like five, five thirty.
Oh, you better make it at four because it's a half an hour to get there.
Well, that's a good point.
You could park at Brookside and walk across.
Yeah.
I walk across all the time.
Can we do that?
I don't see why not. I have, I have, um, copies of that application here, so you can take it home.
Okay.
It's open.
Thank you. All right. Board, um, and some committee updates, issues and concerns, Malcolm. Uh, Jonathan, Pedro, nothing for me. Jackie, any board committee issues or concerns? Oh, yes, I do have one. Join me. So, uh, eight, eleven is what we decided? Okay, so we need to have a joint meeting with the select board on an application where we both have special permit responsibilities. And, um, we're looking at trying to schedule that on August eleventh, which is a Monday.
What's the application?
The application.
Home application, which is the select board.
A moderate.
And assign, which is the planning board.
Can you join a, can you join a meeting on Monday, August eleventh?
Oh, it's Monday.
It's a Monday. That's the second Monday. Is that your book club?
Third, third Thursday.
Third Thursday, okay. I always feel like whenever we try and do a joint meeting, you're like, that's my book club.
Well, he's got to read it for Thursday.
Malcolm, is that okay with you? Jackie, okay with you? Pedro? Yeah, in theory, I don't have anything on that day yet, so we'll put this on it. Okay? All right. So we'll confirm back to select board at the eleventh. Thank you for that reminder.
Can you start at five?
Five P M?
Start be okay?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, it may interrupt golf, so just make sure you finish. Oh, uh, well, it's timely because it's citizen speak time. So go ahead, Eileen. Can you hear us? Can you?
Okay. Are you going to be discussing the Housatonic Improvement Committee's recommendations for Park Street?
So we are working to try and find a date that works for both, um, Ms. Lamonto and, um, and this board. And I had last communicated with her about meeting in late July and, and I need to finalize that with her, but yes, at some point we will.
Okay. I have July tenth down. That's why I wondered.
Oh, that, I do not believe that won't, that won't work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's on the agenda, then you will.
I think, I think she couldn't make that date and that was why we want, we, so I told her the next meeting and then I don't believe I've heard back from her since then. All right, um, anybody else online? Thanks, Eileen. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Anybody else online? James? Nope. Okay. Anybody else in the room?
When would you like Parks to come back on, for, for O S R P?
Let us, um, we are going to take this up again at our last meeting in July, which is July twenty eighth. What? Oh, I'm in August. I'm sorry. July twenty.
Fourth Thursday, the planning board hopes to dedicate.
A chunk of time.
The meeting. The meeting.
Big chunk of time.
The meeting.
Okay.
That's the goal.
Yes, our second meeting of, of the month. Yes, our second meeting of of the month. Then we'll be, yeah, we'll have to work through it. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn at nine ten. Thank you, everybody.